Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Placerville Planning Commission regular meeting, Tuesday, May 6, 2025. Our first meeting of May. May is Bike Month. Also, May is a great month to get a start on trimming those weeds around the house. And if you do so, I recommend that you lift with the legs, not with the back, unlike I did, to protect your, well, in my case, aging body. But having said that, I call us to order. Will you please join me in resigning our pledge of allegiance? Ms. Watkins, Howie, would you please call the roll? Here.
Vice Chair Lepper.
Here.
Commissioners Ratten.
Here.
Commissioner Sylvester.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Okay, a full house. Next, we move on to closed session reports, which we have none. Next is adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion to do so?
So moved.
Thank you.
Second?
We have a motion, a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Smith, did you vote?
No. Yes. Yes, I approve.
You did say aye?
Aye.
I don't think your microphone was on. So we'll take that as a 5-0, approval of the agenda. Next is our consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by general consent unless any commissioner requests a roll call vote or unless any member of the commission or staff or audience wishes to remove an item for discussion. And tonight, we have two items on our consent calendar. One is to approve the minutes of the regular planning commission meeting and the other is to approve the McDermott SPR 22-06 extension. Does any one, any member of the commission want to pull either of these items?
Yeah, I just need to recuse myself from number 25.
I'm sorry. Could you please turn on your microphone and repeat that?
To recuse myself from 5.2.
Okay. Since that's the second one, why don't you stay while we work on 5.1? We'll do 5.1 then.
Approved.
Oh.
You have them proved together, two of them.
I'd like to pull.
Hold on a second. Go ahead, Catherine.
I'd like to pull 5.1.
You would like to pull 5.1. All right. So we're pulling 5.1. And so then, would any member of the audience wish to remove 5.2 for further discussion? Okay, seeing no concern there, we'll move to number six, items pulled from consent calendar. So that is the minutes from our previous meeting. Catherine, what was your concern?
In the meeting minutes, item 11-1, the site plan review, 2502 market on main exterior lighting. The note stated that the motion for approval, item one, was to remove the lighting on the western elevation fence with the option to install a single layer on the eastern elevation fence. And what we had approved was a single, a single string of lighting along the top of the interior, the front of the fence, the external, excuse me, the external fence.
Okay, I think that is the eastern elevation. So if you're looking at the walkway, so the western would be on the left in those pictures, looking at the building, that would be the west. And then the eastern elevation would be on the interior?
Okay, if that's the same thing, that's fine.
I don't think that's the way we talked about east. I think we talked more like western and interior. But I think that is, I don't think there's.
And the, and the front, too, was specifically mentioned.
Mm-hmm. I'm going to, so Ms. Watkins, Howie, you compiled our minutes. Okay. I'm going to ask for clarification on terminology, western, eastern. What, is that what we used when you reviewed?
Yes, that's what you were saying. The west one would be the one on the side of sweetie pies and the eastern one would be the one on the side of melters.
So they, oh, but it is.
But it is western and eastern.
But it is adjacent to the walkway to the front of the building? Not, there's not a third fence line.
No, there's not.
Between that building and Meltzer's building?
Correct, no. It's the same walkway fencing.
Okay. I think, I think, would you like to amend that to say east side of the entrance walkway? So it's clear, clear that we're not talking about an eastern property line fence?
Yeah, because when, when I read this, that was my understanding. And, and I did, I did review the video, the meeting video, and it was stated, well, it was eastern fence, interior and front. So, which there is not an eastern fence, the eastern fence is Meltzer's.
Okay.
So maybe we could just amend this to clarify.
Would the word.
Internal, interior.
Just saying, the, a single airline on the interior fence.
Interior fence.
And that would cover the front, too, because it is one fence. So it's not a separate fence, I would think.
Okay.
My logic would follow that.
So with that, let's move back then to, any further changes to the minutes? No? Okay. Then let's, I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes as amended for our regular planning commission meeting of April 15, 2025.
Motion to adopt as amended.
We have a motion and.
Second.
Alyssa's second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. So 5.2, Ms. Smith, you'd like to recuse yourself. All right, we'll give you a moment to leave the room. So this item has not been pulled, but Mr. Smith is going to recuse himself from the vote. So can we have a motion to approve the McDermott SPR 22-06 E2 extension of site plan review?
I'll move.
Thank you, Catherine. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Amy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? 4-0 with one, oh, recu, recused. Okay, Smith recused. And this was, let me get up on my note taking, please. All right. Mr. Smith, you, can someone bring Kirk Smith back to the dais? We're all back. Number seven is items of interest to the public and public comment on non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the agenda, and the subject matter is within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. State law prohibits commission from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special actions by the commission under specified circumstances. Would anyone in the public care to address the planning commission? Okay, seeing no one. Number eight is written communications on non-agenda items. We did not have anything that isn't on our agenda. And we do not have any presentations or educational workshops. That gives, brings us to our public hearings. Ten, environmental assessments and public hearings. Up first is 10.1, which is a conditional use permit, 25-01, allowance of keeping hoofed animals. So before us tonight is an email, copy of an email from former planning staff, city Placerville planning staff, Andrew Painter, regarding this item and administrative procedures. And this caught me off guard. I don't know about the rest of you, but I hope you all had time to read it before the meeting. So Mr. Cahill, I'm going to ask you to maybe summarize this and give us some direction on how we should proceed.
Oh, I, well, I think you should have the public hearing, hear the staff report. I'm willing to respond to Mr. Painter's comments. I've been in touch with him. He never brought this up until, I guess, Friday morning, when he sent you all an email. So I don't know why he did it that way. But to start off with, the, the request here is simple, and there's a little history, as you may know. The applicant wants to keep some horses on her property, and they're not even full-size horses, they're mini horses and maybe a couple of llamas. That's the proposal. She wants to have that use as an accessory use to her main residence. When she bought the property, she was under the, had the understanding that she could have a home and some horses. It's that simple. It's that simple of a request. I think it was in December of last year that the city attorney made a determination that the property, which is zoned R120, which means it's, and that refers then to the density of the property, so 20,000 square foot minimum lot sizes, but it's residential, it's not, it's not like, you know, the rural estates or the residential agricultural. So attorney made a determination that because of state law, changes the state law and specifically SB 330, that the zoning could not be, density could not be lowered. So that sort of put the kibosh on that. So what we did was, we suggested, well, why not a conditional use permit to allow the use on a eight-acre property and, you know, with the idea that it was a compatible use? So, you know, when I looked at the R120, single-family residential district, there is a section for conditional use permits. And, you know, what it says, well, let me back up one minute here. Starts with use permits. Section 10-3-3 of the zoning ordinance says, "Certain uses may be permitted in zones which, in which they are not otherwise outright permitted by this chapter, where such uses are deemed essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare and are in harmony with various elements or objectives of the comprehensive general plan." So that's the bottom line, is it compatible with the general plan of the city of Placerville? The general plan occupies a position of primacy over the zoning ordinance, by the way. The general plan is your constitution for development. So next section is 10-3-4, the title, which is a whole bunch of uses that can be allowed by conditional use permit in the R120 district. And one of those uses is called natural resource development, together with necessary buildings, apparatuses and appurtenances incident thereto. So what in the world is natural resources development? The, the zoning ordinance doesn't provide a definition, so it is ambiguous. So I'd say it's, it's up, really, it's up to the planning commission. But what I did was, I looked at the general plan and I looked at your, essentially, your natural, cultural and scenic resources element of your general plan. So that's, to me, that's the best place to go for a definition of what in the world does the natural resources development include? Could it include agricultural uses with a conditional use permit in the R120 area? Yes, I believe so. And, you know, I'll just read a few sections from your general plan. Because of its location and history, Placerville's natural, cultural, scenic resources are varied and rich. Water resources, surrounding agricultural lands, mineral resources, vegetation and wildlife, intrinsically valuable, at the same time largely define the quality of life in Placerville. Sounds good to me. Goal B of the same element, the natural, cultural and scenic resources element, says it's to prevent the premature conversion of agricultural lands and to protect the soil and resources of the Placerville area. And, and then also, you know, one of the policies is, "The city shall preserve soils most suitable for intensive agricultural production and encourage the continued use of agricultural purposes." So I mean, this isn't even to that level. This is just, you know, a property owner wants to keep a few horses on her property, but it's an agricultural use. And, I mean, by approving this use permit, you are literally following your land use element, which says, the policy, policy six. "The city shall encourage the continuation of agricultural resources related in low-intensity uses adjacent to Placerville's sphere of influence." This property, which is overall eight acres, they're only proposing like seven acres for the, for the pasture area. This property is 280 feet from the, from the boundary to, to your sphere of influence. So it, it really, this property in particular fits to a T what the general plan is trying to preserve. It's just, I would say it this way, it's premature to redevelop this area with a bunch of homes. You know, one, one single-family home with some horses, maybe some llamas, and these are baby horses, maybe the size of a, I don't know, like a giant dog, Saint Bernard.
Great day.
A great day. So, I mean, something like that. So we're really, I think we're getting very pick-a-yun to say, no, you can't have ordinance, you can't have animals on your property unless you first amend the zoning ordinances and specifically call out the keeping of animals. Now, I looked just for another example, beekeeping. The ordinance is silent on beekeeping anywhere. Like, seriously, we're going to have to amend the whole zoning ordinance so somebody can have a hive of bees? I don't think so. I think your general plan and your zoning ordinance provide sufficient flexibility for compatible uses. And I would argue that this is a compatible use to the, to the, you know, rural residential neighborhood here. So, and moreover, because it's a conditional use permit, there are 20 conditions on this property, and one of which is, you know, a restriction on subdivision of this seven-acre parcel. And I want to be clear, there's a diagram in your packet, page two, it shows the project location. And the, the property has a weird shape. It's like two large parcels. One is like one acre and change, and the other is seven acres and change. And they're connected with a cherry stem, a very thin piece of land. The property owner's intention is to, at some point, split the two properties. The one-acre property here will be, I don't know, sold off or whatever. So the focus here is just this seven-acre and change piece of land where there'll be a single-family home and the keeping of some horses. And I might add again, the conditions of approval are generally intended to mimic the, you know, the restrictions for animal use in the RE zone. So, you know, for example, like the 50-foot setbacks from the property lines where the, the animal pasture is. So that is, you know, I don't think there's a point, a need to go through all the conditions of approval, but they are intended to cover a whole array of possible concerns. We do want to prevent this from becoming a nuisance to neighbors. I might add that the project does appear to have the support of nearby neighborhood and the applicant herself, my understanding is she's a second-generation Placervilian in, for this area. So it seems to me there's, you know, just going to need to be a little self-policing, but I think all of these conditions here will manage the aspects of, of this proposed use.
So Andrew Painter's email came through at, on Friday morning. You did not have a chance to review it with the city attorney?
No.
As to whether we're being.
You know, I have not, I was not here Monday or Friday. I'm part-time basis.
Okay.
Planning services.
Mm-hmm.
City, I was not here.
But it's your opinion, based on your knowledge of our general plan and reading Mr. Painter's concern, that in fact, there is the flexibility, notwithstanding his, his statement, that we, let's see, need to grant the public a chance to comment on adding this as a conditional use?
Well, we're not saying that you need to add it. I'm saying that it's, it's already allowable.
Allowable.
As a conditional use under your, you know, the natural resources development section, 10-3-4. And it's a very broad category. You could, it could include a gold mine, could be, you know, mineral extraction, could be agriculture. I might add, too, this is a protection of natural resources as well, this project. The tree cover stays there, there's no grading, no development. It's not improved with impervious surfaces. So, you know, I just think overall, it's a good, it's highly, it's a compatible use and it's highly consistent with your general plan.
At this, I don't want to talk about the proposal before us. I want to focus on Mr. Painter's comment about administrative procedures before we, you know.
Yes.
Move on. So I want to keep our, at this time, keep our attention focused on that. Do any other commissioners have a comment on Andrew Painter's email from Friday, May 2nd, where he recommends that we, his final recommendation is to, let's see, put this on a, postpone this action on this and to date certain, and then take an action to add additional uses? Any comment, any questions for staff on Andrew Painter's?
I think my question is, that's, is not so much about semantics, because I wouldn't really want to describe it as flexibility. It's that what you provided is in the general plan, and it shows that this proposal is consistent with that general plan.
Yes.
Correct? Okay. In addition, we have a concern about fire control and controlling vegetation. Is there?
Wait a minute, I want to focus on Andrew Painter's, because if we decide to postpone this, then we'll be talking about the merits of the project, but I want to focus on Andrew Painter's comments. So, do you have a question about that?
Well, it's always a bad to say. The additional argument can be, in addition to what you've just described, is that an additional use would have been for controlling vegetation, and that necessarily would be for agricultural development, or conversely, not letting vegetation run amok. Am I correct that?
Right.
We're really talking about not flexi, flexibility, but really using the construction that's already present? Am I mistaken?
But, you know, I believe you're correct, but on the procedural issue, it's up to the commission.
Mm-hmm.
You can, you can apply the zoning ordinance very strictly and say, everything has got to be enumerated and spelled out. The arguments I just made are for a case of, you have flexibility under broader categories in your zoning ordinance, and also the goals and policies of your general plan to approve this use if you want to. The courts give deference to cities and how they interpret their local regulations. So that's, that's what I have to say on that, is, is what Andrew Painter's saying, you know, you want, if you want to go in that direction, you can. There's, you know, you're, you're welcome to. I'm just saying, I believe you have more discretion than that.
Okay. And, go ahead.
Yeah. I live on the edge of the slippery slope. And so when you're discussing this being unique to this residence, I'm now saying, why wouldn't we then go look at all of the residences and change the ordinance to allow for the two hoofed animals? And then an exception above that, which is what, when I came in thinking the two was allowed, I was trying to think, how could I be flexible around this to speak to this property and the things that it does, but also live within our, our rules as they're written? And so what is your, I guess, what you were saying is, it's not, it's just one property, but I see this as now everyone in R120 can come to us.
Again, I, I want to focus our, because if we.
Yes.
Agree to postpone this, then.
Yes, and so that's what I'm asking. I'm asking, I say, I see value in postponing it with these concerns expressed, just because, and I'm just trying to make sure I'm understanding what Carl was presenting is why, that if we were to approve this one, that technically means that everyone in R120 can come to us for a conditional use permit for hoofed animals?
Well, the findings are based, so every, with a use permit, you're not, you're not setting a precedent. You absolutely are not. And in this case, that what is unique is, the property is over seven acres.
Right.
So there aren't that many parcels.
Well, because I had some questions, too, about the number, and because there is no number in there. And so without even having a two to start with, it makes me a little, anyway, okay, I won't go too far, but I just wanted, I'm trying to understand.
Right. I, I hear Carl, but I'm really uncomfortable moving forward with these open questions.
That's how, where I land.
Okay.
And the number, if you want to set a number, that's, that's your discretion, you also set a number.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead, Alyssa, you have a question for Mr. Cahill?
Yeah. Could you point me to, if it's written down, or could you read what the definition of natural, natural resources development was again, please?
There's no definition in the zoning ordinance.
Oh, okay.
But if I look at natural resources, from what your general plan says, there's a whole element of the general plan dedicated to natural resources, it does include agricultural uses.
I see. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Catherine, do you have any questions about Mr. Painter's comments about the administrative process?
No, not right now.
Okay.
Not at this moment.
Okay.
I think.
So I just had one more question. Should we, at this time, take public comment, since this affects our, how we proceed? Okay. At this time.
Madam Chair, I, I think that the question I would, what, in conscience with what our colleague has asked, is how many properties would potentially be able to raise this? So if we're talking about some problems down.
As for a conditional use permit, you mean?
Yes. If, if we're talking about some. If we're talking about some slippery slope, and a lot of these coming down the road, exactly how many parcels do we have that would be like this, where we have five or six acres or more? How common would this be?
There's a lot of, a lot of Placerville is owned R120. So, you know, if you take that view, that's why we have conditional use permits, so we look at each one individually.
That's right.
Yeah, there's a lot, lot of the area...
I don't know how many parcels are over five acres and more that are R120s owned. That's probably something we can look up with GIS system, probably can get a number on that.
It's known, it's just not, you know, something that, we were looking at this property in its own context, right?
And it's, you know, if you want to specifically enumerate uses like the keeping of animals, beekeeping, you can do that. I also would say you don't have any reason why you couldn't approve this use permit and direct the staff to come back with, you know, proposed amendments to the ordinance to allow the keeping of animals under certain conditions, standards.
I'm not clear. You know, I apologize, this is new to me, Andrew Painter's comments. So it is within our purview to add these additional uses? As planning commission, it doesn't have to go up to city council for approval? I don't want to, you know...
No, if you want to amend...
That would be a much longer process.
Yes, if you want to, I mean, it would be a text amendment.
Right. But that's something within our jurisdiction.
But the ultimate approval of that would go to the city council. You would make a recommendation.
Make a recommendation to add that, so, okay. Thank you for clarifying that. At this time, I'd like to open it up to the audience for comments on this. Again, I, we have an application for a conditional use permit to do something. What we're considering right now is information received from a former staff member, Andrew Painter, pointing out that there is an administrative procedure that he feels was not followed, and that is that the public must be granted notice on an agenda of the intent to add additional uses in the R120 zone, which would include the keeping of hoofed animals. So, his recommendation, for those of you who may not have seen a copy, I'm sure there's a copy at the back of the room. His suggestion is to direct staff to place an action item on a future agenda to consider additional uses permitted by right or by use permit per its authority under Section 10-3-1E1 of the zoning ordinance, and continue the item at hand, which is, I'm sorry, CUP 25-01, continue that item to a date certain following commission action under its Section 10-3-1E authority within the zoning ordinance. And I apologize to those of you who came here tonight to talk about the application at hand, that's what we thought, too. We just became aware of this tonight. It was, this message was waiting for us when we arrived. So, Mr. Painter thinks that the planning commission, it would be better procedurally to step back, make sure that we add language in our ordinance that the keeping of hoofed animals and perhaps bees. We amend our ordinance as such, and then take up this item, the keeping of hoofed animals. So, please, if you do have a comment about this administrative procedure, please come up to the podium at this time and share your thoughts with the planning commission. I don't think that, I don't see this as really extending it very long. It would be a month or so delay in, you know, taking action on the item. But if you would, please, state your name for the record. Welcome.
Hi. Yes.
Yes, please speak, and come up close to the microphone so that we can hear you.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay. My name is Sandy Martin. I am the property owner.
You're the property...
Well, remember me from last September 17th meeting, in which you guys reviewed the conditions of RE, estate residential zoning, to determine if the property met it. You guys did approve it on September 17th in order to go forward with what is technically they're calling a downzone. And unfortunately, due to a technicality under state law of SB 330, it cannot be officially approved at city council level. So hence, working with Carl since January, we are here. I guess I just have a few questions, because we're not going to talk about the merits, I respect that. But I do have a few questions. Are, is it your, are you going on the record to say you had no knowledge that this, Andrew Painter, had brought up this issue until you walked into the meeting tonight? You did not receive an email on Friday?
We did not receive...
Did you have any knowledge that this was an issue before tonight you walked into this?
No, I did not. Didn't?
Okay. No one received an email prior to?
Right. The email was, it was addressed to us, but it went to the planning department inbox. So, we did not know about that until we arrived tonight, that there was a possible administrative procedure that was not followed.
Okay. Okay. All right, that's good. Thank you for stating that.
And as we've indicated, we would, if we took the recommendation per Mr. Painter, ask staff to place the, an action item on a future agenda, possibly as soon as two weeks for us to consider, and for the public to comment on adding this additional use. And then, your actual application would follow that as soon as possible. And please bear in mind that, you know, we, state law requires that we expedite this, so we aren't forestalling, you know, consideration. It's, I hope you appreciate this is, this kind of new information for us.
I do appreciate it. My next question is, who do you, of you personally know Andrew Painter?
Who of us, who?
Who do you on the board know Andrew Painter?
I worked with Andrew Painter, he was our, he was second in the planning staff before Kristen Hunter and before Deanna.
Okay.
So, yeah, I worked with Andrew.
I worked with Andrew, but I've never spoken to him outside of sitting here as Mike Carl.
Right.
We have no personal relationship.
He was, he wrote in many of the staff reports that were presented to Planning Commission. Kirk, was Andrew still on staff when you came on the Planning Commission? Or had Kristen already come?
It was gone.
Okay, he had already retired. Okay. So, those two of us, so worked with him, well, not worked, yeah, we worked with him.
Have prior experience with working with Andrew Painter.
And he is...
My next question is, does he have any involvement with the city, or is he now a private citizen submitting a comment?
Does he have any...
Involvement with the city of Placerville and official capacity?
No, he, as I understand it, he has commented on many other items that came before us. Kristen Hunter would refer to that, and I know that he just kind of keeps his finger on the pulse of what goes on in, you know, in Placerville, even though he doesn't live here anymore.
And he's submitting a comment as a private citizen, then?
Right. This is not the first time that we've gotten comments, email comments, from Mr. Painter.
Okay. My next question is, is that it's an option, from my understanding, for what's existing in the general plan?
Right. So after we take public comment, we need to discuss this as a body.
That is my, that's my question and my comment. It's an option, and so I'm not understanding why we aren't considering the option to move forward with Mr. Cahill's suggestion.
We would be considering the option of taking a step back, putting this, adding hoofed animals as a possible conditional use for R120 parcels on, in our ordinances, and then we could, according to Mr. Painter's interpretation, then we would be, it would be proper for us to move forward on considering your application.
Okay, my next public comment is, since we had no notice of this as public, or even at, what I'm understanding, board level, we don't have any ability to research it, and a private citizen with very specialized knowledge has come in and provided no notice to the city of this. So is there any ability to actually determine if we should even move forward with this issue, or if we can just table it completely, this issue, come back two weeks from now after we've been allowed time to research it, to understand if that's even a valid option? I mean, we're going off of his word, and not necessarily, I mean, Mr. Cahill hasn't had the option to do it, I haven't had notice, you guys haven't had notice, so...
Right. Good point. Good point. Okay.
That's my last comment, so thank you.
Regarding Mr. Painter, right. So, thank you very much, appreciate your insights. Would anyone else like to address the commission on this administrator procedure item?
Hi, guys.
Good evening. Would you please state your name for the record?
Ruth Carter, City of Placerville, and neighbor around the corner. So I just want to bring attention to a couple of things. Number one, the whole purpose of a conditional use permit...
Okay, go ahead. I don't want you to talk about the merits of her application, but...
Okay. So, you don't need to update zoning to get approval for a conditional use permit. That is the purpose, literally by definition, of a conditional use permit. And it is within your purview. You don't have to table things. It doesn't, you don't have to change zoning in order to allow this. That is what the conditional use permit is for, literally. So, zoning already allows the use conditionally, per our general plan, as been pointed out. And so, yeah, rezoning is a lot more drastic, it will take a lot more time. This poor lady, she got her thing approved last September. Let's stop dragging it out. You guys have the authority, it's in your purview, and if there needs to be an amendment, do the amendment, you know? That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize for interrupting you, I was afraid you were going to get off onto the project. Okay. Would anyone else like to talk about this concern about the administrative procedure? Good evening.
My name is Deana Keltner, and I live on Madrone Lane.
Would you please speak into the microphone? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Okay. How's that? Better?
Maybe a little closer.
Okay. My name is Deana Keltner, I live on Madrone Lane. I just see a lot of attention going to Mr. Painter's letter. However, you have someone here that has investigated all this, researched all this, has told you that you have the ability to approve this conditional permit for Sandra Martin. So I'm just wondering why there is so much focus on that letter, instead of what he has already told you you are capable of doing for her.
Would anyone else like to speak to this topic? If not, then I'll close the public comment portion. Oh, sorry, didn't see you flinch.
Sorry, I didn't, I didn't actually attend the meeting for this particular issue, but I guess since I'm applying for a conditional use permit, I'll support Ms. Martin. So I just want to say, I, so I'm owner of property here in Placerville, attended many council meetings and development meetings over my life. The conditional use permit is conditional by nature, so I know you're not wanting to talk about the merits of it, but it sounded like, from what I picked up on Mr. Cahill's comments, that the zoning they're talking about is, goes as low as 20,000 square feet, and they have an eight-acre parcel. There's a pretty broad separation between the lowest allowable square footage on that zoning issue and this particular property. I know it sounds like this owner has kind of gone through as many months as I have with mine, so I don't see why the board couldn't approve the conditional use permit, and if that zoning changes or public comment come at a later date, they could always just void the conditional use permit and make everyone happy. So those are my comments.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? And I'll count to three this time. Okay, no one blinked? All right, now, let's close the public comment portion and bring this back to the commission for consideration. I have one question for Mr. Cahill. If the commission decides to move forward based on your recommendation, counter to what Mr. Painter, how he interprets our administrative procedures, what's the harm? If we find out, let's say, and as you recommended, we could send staff, we could ask staff to come back at a future date with language to modify our ordinance, to include, specifically include this as Mr. Painter's recommending, specifically include hoofed animals as something that can be considered under a conditional use permit process, and so on. So if we're wrong, if we went ahead tonight with this proposal, we're wrong, then what happens? It has to just come back to us? If the city attorney takes a look at Mr. Painter's letter and says, oh yeah, he's absolutely right, you have to take a step back, we just take a step back, right?
Actually, what would happen is, you would need to exhaust administrative remedies first. So, if somebody said, you know what, I'm, I'm going to appeal the planning commission's decision, it goes to the council.
Right.
And they can make a decision. And that's, and they might send it back to you, but, you know, they, they could...
So they can appeal our decision? Can someone, if someone objected, oh, you did not have, did not follow administrative procedures, that's the basis of their objection? Then, it comes back to us under, after we've amended our code, and we consider it then? Okay.
Right.
So it's not like we're going to get arrested, or...
And I, I would say this, too, that the applicant paid for a public hearing, and this is their day in court, they paid for it. You have other choices. You could deny the use permit and say, no, we got to change our zoning first. Or you could approve the use permit and say, you know what, it appears to us it's a compatible use, it's allowed by the general plan, and it also falls under this broader category of, of natural resources. So you have more options than, I, because I would say, yeah, if you continue it, it's not going to, it's going to be more than two weeks. It would be two weeks to put a discussion item on your agenda to talk about it, and then it's probably going to be several months before this ever gets back to you, and then it's going to go, then another trip to the city council. So we are, it's probably going to be the end of the summer before they saw any decision on...
On the merits of the actual issue.
If you deny it, it at least gives them the opportunity to appeal your decision to the city council.
Okay. Thank you for that. All right. Commissioners, what's your, what are your thoughts?
Catherine? Could we recommend it to the city council?
Recommend?
Is that the application?
We have to take action.
So it has to be an approval or a denial?
Right.
Okay.
So we would take action first, before the city council gets a shot at, I believe.
I'll share with you my concerns. I've known Andrew Painter for a long time, have great respect for his judgment, but I do believe that when you ask for a hearing, you should ask for a hearing. The California Administrative Procedure Act is only 15 pages. The Federal Administrative Procedure Act takes up an entire volume. All these issues about last-minute presentations, submitting things over the transom, by email, whatever, on the day of a hearing, are fully addressed in the federal. We let this happen, and that's fine. But we've heard it. We've heard this issue that's been presented. And based on what I heard, I find it compelling to consider moving on the application. As far as the slippery slope, we have concerns about fire control, and we have an effective instrument that's used to control vegetation, animals. Just like the city uses animals, goats, down on Placerville Drive and on Lower Main Street. So we have that available. So I'm not, and I'll hear from the applicant, I'd like to at least, find out about what would distinguish it from other people, because it wouldn't be just a slippery slope. The next person who comes down with five acres or whatever it is, has to show that they're not going to intrude on their neighbors, they're not going to have animal waste that's going to bring in flies and cause problems, they're not going to have a stable right next to someone else's property. They're going to have to do those things every case by case by case basis. So I don't think it's going to be a slippery slope. Again, I have great respect for Andrew, who's a wise, thoughtful person, but so is Mr. Cahill, and so I'm sure are the people who can possibly present their views today. I think that when we delay hearings, it's that old adage about justice delayed is justice denied, and we add to the cost of applicants, and I think we should be mindful of that. And again, something's imperative when it comes to fire control, and I like animals and goats and llamas and sheep and anything else can...
So it's your opinion that we aren't in error to proceed with the hearing tonight?
Because, as he's described, we have discretion under the general plan to do something that's consistent with agricultural uses, and, excuse me for not being more literate about our general plan, but I assume fire control is imperative and in there somewhere multiple times. multiple times.
Okay, thank you. Alyssa?
I agree. I think this is an appropriate use of the conditional use permit, assuming that we do have those flexibilities, and there, it wasn't defined upfront. Um, I, I do believe we have those flexibilities. Um, I think it's a better option as well than changing the zoning ordinance that would just outright allow it for all those different properties, whereas I really do think that in this situation, the keeping of the hoofed animals should be considered on a case-by-case basis. So I think it's, um, I think we should move forward.
Okay. Amy, do, do you have anything to add?
That's where I landed. I'm on, I'm on both sides of the fence, and this was sort of how I felt coming in, is that, um, that the hoofed animals, I, I'm in, I'm in favor of this, of this in general, and I'm in favor of being able to keep the hoofed animals. My inclination would be to research and make sure that we're not out of line, but I also am totally in favor of moving things forward. If that is something that we are told and clear that it is within our abilities, then as long as we are not overstepping our bounds, then I'm comfortable moving forward. Um, again, I, I err on the side of cautions, but I don't want to be a restrictor or anything. Um, so I can go either way. I can, I can postpone it to, to do a little more research, but I would want it to come back right away because I don't want her waiting, I understand. Um, but I also could move forward with the understanding, as explained, that we have the authority to do so.
And Catherine, anything to add?
I'd like to move forward.
Okay. Good. Well, thanks for, um, sharing your thoughts. Um, I don't think we need to take a vote on that despite, or, or do we need to take a vote on that? No. I just wanted to, um, thoroughly vet this, um, people who came down here tonight, as well as other commissioners. I think, uh, Mr. Painter, you know, he's, he, he knows our, you know, our documents, our city documents very well. And, um, at this point, I, I think you've heard of, it might be good for staff to, uh, address his concerns. What he's asking for is a slight amendment to the ordinance that says certain additional things can be considered under the conditional use permit process. And, uh, since he's brought this to our attention, I think it, uh, is, um, a good idea for the city to, to take care to. It's kind of, um, you know, kind of closing a loophole. So, um, having said that, let's go ahead and proceed with the hearing on the conditional use permit itself, CUP 25-01, the allowance of keeping hoofed animals. And, um, Mr. Cahill, this is your item, so if you would, please, uh, give us your staff report.
Well, I did pretty much weave the staff report into my presentation on the procedural issues. And so the bottom line here, and I think the applicant can best describe what they're using, uh, the land for, and what, what their intended use is, but, you know, so here's the deal. They want to, uh, the applicant wants to construct her dream home on this property, but she's not going to construct the home if she finds out, sorry, no, you cannot have your pet horses. So that's, that is, you know, in terms of timing and sequence, that's why it's coming to you this way. Um, it's another condition on the use permit. There's no, um, the, the keeping of the animals is not allowed until such time as the home is constructed. And these are baby horses anyway, so my understanding is the, um, property owner does not want to just keep these little horses out on, uh, on this property without proper supervision and, and shelter, because they are, with their size, they're, they're easy prey for mountain lions. So that's, I mean, just in terms of the timing, so you understand there won't be horses there tomorrow. There's, you know, typically, they'll have to come back to you for the, uh, you know, I have to check on that, but, you know, a, a brand-new home, if it needs a site plan review, it'll come back to you. If it's something the staff can approve, the staff will approve it. Um, but yeah, that's, that's going to have to happen first. A house will have to be, will have to be constructed, sheltering, pasture fencing, all of that will have to be, be done. But, um, it's, it's a very simple use, and, you know, we are proposing the use permit because, you know, the staff already tried to, and, you know, it was the, um, property owner's application, we tried to upzone, which makes a lot of sense, you know, but we can't do that because of a, you know, based on a city attorney's determination. Can't do it because of state law. So that, that's pretty much, I, I'm happy to answer any questions you have on this. I also think the, the applicant has a lot of
Sure.
...knowledge as well about their intentions.
Uh, I had, so you just mentioned that, um, what the property owner is, um, attempting to do is make sure that she has all the, um, allowance, is allowed to do what she wants to on this property before she undergoes the, uh, more expensive, uh, construction. And this conditional use permit, then, um, this, if for some reason she doesn't move forward on it, it expires 18 months, is that right? That, okay. So, that gives her plenty of time to, um, move forward with her other plans, and maybe if she's not done, then an extension on this CUP and so on, the, the normal procedures. I had a question about, um, I, again, the application, um, the project proposed is very clear. Um, I think, um, I have a lot of questions about the, uh, recommended conditions of approval. Since this does run with the land, you know, this, uh, application has lots of support, lots of comments were received. Um, and so, uh, obviously, this homeowner, or that the property owner is very responsible and, um, doesn't, no one anticipates any problems, however a CUP runs with the land, and, which means that, should the property change hands, um, I want to make sure that we've got sufficient, um, specified sufficient controls, most of which she's going to, I, I would think, comply with. They're just, um, you know, good practice, but I, uh, I feel like we, uh, could bolster them somewhat. That's just my thought. But I wanted to know, number eight, setback compliance, um, hoofed animal-related structures, um, shall maintain a 50-foot, uh, buffer from property lines. Uh, where did that, um, number come from, 50 feet?
It's from your zoning ordinance.
From the, the zoning ordinance for...
Or the City of Placerville.
For the city, and that's in one, um, one acre, or?
Uh, it's, I believe it's from the RE section. Um, it's, it's, yeah, it's in the, um, it's in your zoning ordinance under...
Okay, I was looking at R120, so, um, you know, is it, trying to figure out what, and look at what other jurisdictions we're doing as well. Um, and also in that part of our zoning ordinance, is there a list of, uh, or specification of how many animals can be kept?
No, it's, it is, um, you can set a number. I mean, that's, that is, again, the beauty of a conditional use permit. You have a lot of discretion in, in terms of the conditions you set. Um, the, the code itself is silent on the number. It does say, so long as it's not a nuisance to your neighbors.
Okay. Um, nor does it specify the actual types. There, there's a wide range of...
Right.
...what's considered a hoofed animal. Okay. Okay. Um, and lastly, um, we don't have any language in here about enforcing compliance, other than city staff. Uh, you know, our, our compliance is complaint-driven. Um, so, uh, do you have any comments about, you know, who, who's going to be responsible to make sure these animals are well taken care of?
That is condition 20, which is violation of the permit conditions of approval, or other applicable laws are subject to city code enforcement, abatement, and penalties is stipulated in section 10-38 through 10-310 of the municipal code. So there's a whole procedure spelled out in municipal code in terms of going about, um, you know, enforcement. And as the commission, you, and, and, you know, typically on the recommended, recommendation of staff is, you can call up the use permit, say, this isn't, this isn't working, folks, and you call it up, you can add more conditions, you can make findings for revoking the use permit. Um, that's all within your purview.
Okay. Um, okay, those were my questions. Anyone else have a question for staff on the staff report?
Those are my questions.
Go ahead.
Those were my questions.
Those, oh.
A lot of the ones you asked were mine.
I guess my question's, if you could just clarify for me. So if we grant this, it runs with the land and it's, in essence, in perpetuity, correct?
Yes, unless the conditions aren't being complied with, and it becomes a nuisance, and then you can revoke it.
So, let's hypothetically say, this owner sells the property after it's been developed with small horses in five years. The next owner comes in and instead of five horses wants five big horses, or 20 big horses. It'd be still governed by the same use permit, correct?
Unless we live in it. It's our, our authority to limit it.
And I think that's...
I think you're getting to a concern of others, though.
That's what I'm getting to.
Yes.
It's because, for example, when it comes to goats, sheep, llamas, and, uh, pachas, you've got certain kind of waste versus cows that are more likely to attract, just general knowledge, fleas, flies, odor, and so that would be a factor. The, uh, the number of animals would be a factor. And, and I think I'd feel much more comfortable knowing what's in mind, but I guess that's something we can hear from the applicant about.
And also something for us to discuss. I think others have that concern.
After we get some facts.
Anyway, go ahead, Catherine.
I noticed that, um, conditions five and 15 are referencing the zoning code section for the residential estate. Is that, was that intentional because you're pulling from that, the language from that code? Okay, so it's not because, because I, when I originally looked at this, I wasn't clear if it was a zoning code or just that you're pulling from, uh, I'm sorry, a zoning change. Um, but it's not, this is just pulling that language from the other section. Okay. I was looking at number six, considering, um, where it says that they can't be constructed on the property and have received the certificate of occupancy from the city. Is there a reason why it's only at the certificate of occupancy level versus after, like, occupancy has occurred? And my question in that is more so of like the animal welfare side of, if at any point the house becomes vacant, um, or prior to someone moving in, um, just wanting to make sure that the animals are cared for?
Yes, I mean, you, you can, if you want to be really clear, you can state that, you know, in addition to the certificate of occupancy at such time as the property is, the house is occupied.
Right.
And it, and the other condition does say that, um, the, um, keeping of the animals is, has to be, you know, there has to be, uh, by the resident
Right.
...who lives on site, not, not somebody who's living remotely somewhere else.
That's fair. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. At this point, we'd like to ask you to come back up, if you would care to, um, and, uh, present your project to us. I think we have some questions for you. Ms. Martin? And then after Ms. Martin gives her presentation, uh, we will open it up for, uh, public comment.
Hello. Again, my name is Sandy Martin. Can you hear me? All right. Uh, Sandy Martin, I'm the property owner. Um, let's get started with your guys' questions.
Okay, based on what you've been hearing from, any other comments, anything you want to, uh, highlight or underscore from your application?
Yeah, I was just trying to listen to all your guys' concerns. Um, I like to give a recap because I know, Ms. Lepper, um, Mr. Smith and Ms. Kinney, you were, um, last September at the planning commission when this was going through a rezone, and the rezone was going from half-acre to estate residential. Estate residential zoning, and this was fully discussed on September 17th of 2024, and was approved by the planning commission, meaning the property met the conditions required in order to be in a state residential zone. And if you note within that, that's code section 10-5-4B permitted uses. So agricultural uses such as raising and grazing livestock, poultry, and other animals, growing and harvesting trees and fruits, vegetables, et cetera, is discussed, and then the concept of nuisance. So when the language is being drafted for a conditional use permit, the goal was to, um, essentially focus on something that is in language that's vetted, that exists within the code, so we would have a standard for people to understand what the use would be. Um, and since it already went through planning commission last fall, and it was determined that this property fits it, is, um, you said, Ms. Lepper, there's a slippery slope if you have R120. This is a very unique property. It's a very large piece. It sits on the boundaries of what you guys would see county and city. Um, and so, it is a very unique property in the sense that it's R120. As, um, Mr. Cahill and I have discussed before, likely, you know, if it was this day and age, it wouldn't be an R120. And so, um, I just want to remind for the, just for the record, that it was approved last fall. The property met the conditions to be R120, which includes the fact of agricultural use or the concept of like a hoofed animal livestock on the property. Um, that's the basis for the idea that we could do a conditional use permit, and that the reason we're sitting here today, and it was not moved forward to city council, was just because there is now, um, a law, SB 330, that does not allow you to technically downzone the property that the city, um, supposedly was not aware of when we were going through this process to downzone last, last year. Um, so that's some background on the property. Um, as far as the conditions go, um, Mr. Cahill did at length the conditions in there. Um, what I would just add to that is, is that as, whether you're a property owner, you then have all the other regulations that fit within the city and county, because you exist within Placerville, and you exist within Elderaide County. And then if you own an animal, Title Six of the Elderaide County, um, Animal Control Ordinance, I believe is what it's titled, applies. So that's the concept of making sure the animal has welfare, you know, the proper humane treatment, water, food, the correct shelter. Those still all apply. So just because these conditions apply, if anything, these conditions, I went through and actually read the ordinance for Title Six, these conditions, if anything, are a lot more restrictive than you see in any other county code, whether you're looking at a state level, whether you're looking at county level, or even city level for what is RE. If you look at the actual zoning in RE, there is nothing as to animal welfare in here, there's nothing as to soil health, there's nothing as to the mitigation or prevention of whatever you want to say for how the property is used for agriculture. The point is, is that it goes to nuisance, and whether or not it's a nuisance. And RE is very particular in the sense it doesn't apply to every property. It has to fit certain conditions that are outlined in 10-5-4, which means that it has to have a certain steepness to it, it needs to be in a rural nature in the sense of a rural area, it needs to be more, five acres or more. And so this property by chance fit that. And, um, so I just want you guys to keep that in mind when you're thinking of it, and just thinking of the conditions, and, um, whether or not they're coverage enough for what they lack, the, um, rest of, whether it's state or county or city, will definitely cover because it already exists. So...
Go ahead, Amy.
How many horses do you want to have? How many miniature horses are you looking to have? I'm just curious.
So I currently have three.
Okay.
Um, so I do not know. Um, it's...
Five, 30, 100, like, that's the kind of range, huh?
Freak no, for lack of a better word. No. I'm thinking, um, 15 at the max. Um, what I would say to that, though, is, is that I do have a riding horse, a regular-sized riding horse, and so I would expect she will be on the property at some point with me. I do not expect to have cow at all, or a pig.
How about a giraffe?
I have, a giraffe is a, um, I don't think, that's like a wild animal, so no. No. So it'll be limited to equine. Um, llamas was discussed previously because the concept was to provide a guardianship for the mini horses. I, my mini horses, uh, the smallest, she is 27 inches tall, and then the largest is about, she's about 32, and everything. They're very tiny. So you actually do have, uh, concerns about, it's usually dogs, neighbor dogs that come and get them. So you do have concerns about that. So, um, llamas was considered, also llamas was considered purely because you have a large piece of land. In a way, this would be a lot nicer if it was a smaller piece. I could, you know, give you management numbers in the concept of, yeah, a couple horses in a corral's going to be fine. Um, I don't have any intent to have a lot of animals, is what I would say. Um...
And how many miniature horses did you, I heard you have three, but...
I have three.
And you would like to have ten?
I would, 10. I don't know what I would like to have. Um, I wouldn't put a number on it. What I would put a number on is, is that I'm comfortable with what is the RE zoning that was discussed, which doesn't have a number on it. Um, the next zoning level down is the R1A, which is two hoofed animals per acre, and that would be essentially 15 animals on that property is what that's considering. And if anything, that's a very conservative number, because R1A considers two hoofed animals on one acre, and that one acre has a house, a garage... And that one acre has a house, a garage, your barn, you know, your other living. So that concept of two animals on one acre is very conservative in the sense of when you think of what actually handle, what the property could actually handle. I'm okay with putting a number on it if they want to. I've told Carl that. I would prefer that we go with what was the RE concept to understand the use so that there is some security in the language. My chief concern, and I've expressed this to Carl, was is that when we get into conditions and we get into use language, if it is not existing in what we have in state level and city codes, then it leaves it up to interpretation and we either end up back here and it's not effective. And so there is language within Title VI of the Animal Control Ordinance, that's at the county level. There's language that sits within your zoning at R1A, and there's language that exists within R1E. And then there's language at the state level for the use of hoofed animals on property. And so that's, you know, that was my concern. That's, I just want to make sure that whatever's approved, that that's what we are using for language for the conditions. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any questions for our applicant? Go ahead.
Just if you tell me more about the horses, this is just a pet. It's not like they're, have the agricultural uses that would be the case for those other kind of animals we described, right?
Agricultural use in the sense that they're bred, no. I don't believe in breeding, so no breeding. Agricultural use in the sense they're going to plow your fields, no. No.
When I was speculating
I don't, is, I, could it, I, yeah.
But I was speculating about the use of vegetation control. So what kind of vegetation control, if any, do miniature horses provide?
They're good, as my vet calls them, the Hoover vacuums of the equine world. They eat about everything they see. And so when we're talking whether it's numbers for what I would expect on the property or need on the property, where I'm in, what's in the back of my mind is that's seven acres. I just want one house on it. At some point, I'm going to have to do some type of vegetation control in order to keep the property have defensible space. If you guys recall, when we discussed last September, the property was very densely vegetated when I purchased it, and it was over $30,000 worth of actual mastication and tree work in order to bring it into code so that we would not have fire safety concerns. And so that work was done. And it's now very beautiful. There's a good amount of vegetation still on the property and, but there's still now defensible space. But things grow because it's nature. And so essentially, yeah, mini horses will provide that ability to keep those weeds down. And they'll just, you know, they are a pet. They're something I enjoy, but they also do provide that component.
Or purposes of housing for the animals, such as some kind of barn or cover, where did you have in mind locating that?
Located at?
Where would it be?
Okay. So on the actual map, the site plan that submitted, you see the 50-foot setback clearance. That's the most conservative number. That goes with the RE zoning that was discussed last. And so that's why that's on there. If you actually go and pull the actual map of the property, which is in the back page of your guys' staff report that you got, you're going to see that the property is, it's not quite a, you know, rectangle and everything. It sits on Maureen and it sits on Madrone. It is very nice at the front. There's some gorgeous trees. And then at the back, there's not so much tree. When you get to about the middle, nice chunk of it, that about three to four acres or
And when you say back, you're talking toward Maureen Drive as
Yeah, I consider, I grew up on Madrone, so I consider.
So Madrone to you is the front.
Madrone's the front to me and everything. Excuse me, sorry. I should have clarified that. Yeah, so Maureen to me is the back. And so I'm planning on living in the center. And that would be where I would keep the animals within that.
The animals would be at the back?
They're in the center, not the back, because the back
In the center, okay. And your house would be at the front, closer to Madrone?
It would be closer to Madrone, but the level part of the property, the nicest part of the property, is almost a third way back before you get to it. And there's some nice Madrone trees that I don't plan on, like, messing with, and I really like them. So, yeah. So as far as house goes and where the animals would live, I would say you have a back Maureen that's a, you know, a good, like, quarter. And then you have the front of Madrone that's a good quarter, quarter of that seven acres and probably that half in between. I'm going to live in that area. It's the nicest, flattest part of the property. It's the most private and, you know. It also actually has doesn't
You've got all that, all that room and
It's a lot of room.
You want the privacy and to have the benefits of your, you know, large parcel. Any other questions for our applicant? Okay, this, please take a seat. Thank you so much. We really appreciate you taking the time again to come down here and talk to us and walk us through our questions about your application. It's obvious that you've thought this through and, you know, you've really educated yourself on all the requirements. Obviously, you're an animal lover, so please, take a seat and I'll open this up, oh, unless you have anything else to add.
The only thing I was just going to add to it is is that I do know some of my neighbors have come and talked
Oh, absolutely. We're going to open this up for public comment.
To make whoever else
You have presented all the information you want to.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. As I said, we'll open up for public comment now. If you would like to step up to the podium and speak about the project, we'd love to hear from you. We will ask, we do ask that you keep your comments to around three minutes.
Hi.
Thank you.
Again, Deana Keltner. And I just wanted to say that I'm fully in support of Sandra's request for the conditional permit. I did want to mention that the property, as she's talking about, has this flat area in the center of the property. I walk the whole neighborhood. I go up and I walk Maureen, and you can literally not see where that flat property is from either side. So it really would not be noticeable, the animals. I know there's some concern about the setback, where they would be located. But just from my experience walking the neighborhood, from Maureen, you can't see that flat spot. From Madrone, you can't see the flat spot either, so.
Thank you. And I just want to make sure that you, that you did, or say for the record that you did send an email to us dated Thursday, May 1st. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to comment on the project? Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Ed Sneller. I live on Madrone. I'm actually Sandy's neighbor. I've lived there for six years. What drew me there was the remoteness, the ruralness of the property or the properties around there. And I think Sandy is a very responsible pet owner, if you want to call the horses bets, and also a very responsible property owner. So I think whatever she does, it would not interfere with the neighborhood at all. So I am in favor of you allowing her this, this usage permit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to comment about the project? Good evening.
Hello again. I just want to add a couple of thoughts. So there are multiple layers, as she pointed out. I think it was really smart to use the language for the RE zoning to clarify what the ask is for the use of the property. And it's already layered under city, county, and, you know, animal control. So there's really no need to put an additional restriction on there, in my opinion. You know, you may end up with dogs and, you know, mixed use. Maybe, maybe she'll end up with a donkey instead of a llama or something like that, and that's going to be another hoofed animal because they're really great protectors. So, you know, it's under animal controls purview also. So if it's not in compliance, there's already mechanisms in place for enforcement. And conditional use permits are brought before, you know, the city for renewal periodically. So it's not a forever thing. So that's something else to be aware of, too. They're going to have to remain in good standing. So, thank you.
Thank you. Hello.
Hi, how's it going? My name's Sheldon Miller. I'm a direct neighbor of the Martins. And I just want to discuss two concerns you guys had. The first one of the animals being taken care of. And the Martins live across the street and their whole livelihood is animals, so there's no concern with that. And also the fire mitigation. They've masticated the whole property and completely transformed it. The, before, you couldn't even see 30 yards into the property, and it's completely cleaned up and way safe for now. So I don't see any reason as to why Eldorado County would not want people to have animals, but that's why we're here.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment on the application? Okay. Thank you all very much. It's, it's great to see all of you come down here and speak to this project and in support of it, as well as giving us confidence that Ms. Martin is, you know, she's concerned about animal welfare and she's making, you know, a good use of this property. It's just, it gives us a lot of confidence and helps us get oriented on this project. Having said that, I still have some concerns about the project. Since it is, I looked at the zoning map, you know, we did have this come before us to have it downzoned. And for, again, reasons beyond our control, it remains in its current zone, R120. And it is surrounded, it is a large parcel surrounded by, you know, more, and different sizes, all within the same zone. But I, you know, it's not to say that you can't put animals on seven acres. That's not my point. But I think as Amy has mentioned before, I'm concerned about the numbers. I, I was hard pressed to find a city that has an ordinance that actually talks about hoofed animals. I did, I used Google, perhaps that wasn't the right search engine, but there are a few out there. Most of them talk about on much larger parcels, not on, you know, something zone 120. But so I was glad to hear that there is the rule of thumb of two acre, two animals per acre. So I thought that would be a good place for us to start our discussion, since Amy also expressed that concern about numbers.
Yeah, that was my number one concern reading this. Because again, I am in support. I think you seem like a great applicant and a great community member, and I love that, and I loved that at our last thing. But it runs with the land, and that's where I get caught up.
If I could just interject, everyone, you're all here in support of Ms. Martin, and she sounds like she, she really has it on the ball. But you have to appreciate our position. This runs with the land, and should that property change hands, we need to have on record that there are specifications and controls that it doesn't become a nuisance in the future, you know, probably maybe when none of us are here anymore. But that's, that's what we're doing for the record.
Yeah, so when I was reading through the application, again, I had some questions too, but it sounds like we've flushed out several of those in our discussions thus far in the meeting. But the number is where I really am getting caught up in not doing, especially without adding a zoning ordinance change and without having it be, it is, like, I feel like it falls more into this two hoofed animal per acre kind of situation setup of how it's structured and everything. So in order to keep it in line with what the current zoning is, but allow for us to have our flexibility into the conditional use permit, I'm landing that I'm comfortable with this as long as we can put a number that really allows for her. And the two per acre was where I came in sort of thinking. That was my, when I was reading through and thinking what would be allowable and achievable. And two, and two per acre was sort of where I landed. It falls very close in line with what she's saying. We could even go up to, go to the 16 on the eight acres if we wanted. So as far as number, I would be uncomfortable approving this without a number. But based on the discussion, I would feel comfortable moving forward if we were to hone in some of these unstated things. And I don't only want to go, it's only rural estate versus falling into the single-family acre residential because they are different, and I think this kind of pulls at both, so. But I agree, the location of the, of the property and such would allow for this.
Right. As it's situated with its surrounding properties, it is, yeah, it's a reasonable request to allow the same activity on this particular parcel, and that is the, the crux, the basis of a conditional use permit. Also, having, tonight, if we do establish a maximum number, also, I would like to create a list of types of animals allowed. These can be changed. If Ms. Martin changes her mind, if a new property owner changes their mind, they can apply for a modification of the conditional use permit to be considered. And, you know, if you make a strong case, you know, I would expect it to be approved. So the maximum number, so I was going on the seven acre estimate, but you were going with a larger parcel, eight, about acres rounding up to allow for more
Especially since the applicant described her, her goal as being the 15, I think that could be something, but I mean, whatever everyone else thinks, too.
And I think that could be added to Condition Number Six fairly easily. Go ahead.
I was just going to add to that. Maybe we frame it more as in the writing as a certain number per acre rather than saying like 14 or 16. And that way, it's just kind of in writing in the future. If you were to sell off a portion of the property or whoever owns the property in the future knows that that standard has been set, and they wouldn't be able to maintain that, the large group on a smaller property.
So two animals per acre not to exceed 16?
I think consistent with what you're discussing, there's several considerations. One would be the number of animals. Like you suggested, the kind of animals, because that could affect the kind of waste that's produced, such as cattle. And, and then there's a provision already there that's kind of ambiguous about waste removal and some kind of system for waste removal. I don't know what that would be. And a fourth concern is again about the, where the placement of the shelter would be. It's described as towards the center or 50 feet from the perimeters. And, and that should be sufficient, but that would be the fourth consideration. And then we are able to have a principal position when it comes to the next potential applicant as to the kind of considerations that we looked at. Rather than leave it for something ambiguous where some down, someplace down the road, someone says, well, it's, it's messy. It's a, there's a lot of waste and smell and so on. So we have something specific.
Well, as to the manure management, it is broad. Number 10. The applicant shall implement a manure management plan. So regardless of whatever kind of animals are living there, I, hopefully that would be taken care, it's not specifying what type. Again, it's just saying, our conditions of approval state that it will, shall be implemented. And if a problem arises, then you go through code enforcement. Let's see, then structures, that was another concern you had. I also was concerned about the setback. Because it is surrounded by R120, I was a little concerned about the 50-foot from the property lines. I realize, or we were told that that comes from our residential estate ordinance. Where you have large, all of the parcels are larger, whereas this one, it's surrounded by, well, not surrounded, but particularly down Giovanni, I think it is. There are smaller parcels closer to Giovanni Drive, across the street on Maureen. Again, houses are a little closer to property lines. So the 50 feet from all property lines, I, I was concerned that that may not be sufficient. I did find in Ojai, California, for 10-acre lots, they require that all structures have, are 400 minimum setback from the dwelling on an adjacent property and 100 feet from a, 100 feet from a dwelling on the property, which, you know, that, that to me then looked a little excessive. You're talking all 10-acre parcels where you would expect to have more of a buffer for each individual house or you, you know, you could build your house that way. So I would like us to consider increasing that somewhat, certainly not to the 400 somewhat, certainly not to the 400 foot, but perhaps 100 foot from properties, houses on adjacent properties, just to, again, ensure that everyone in the neighborhood gets to enjoy their property. And that would be, all hoofed animal related structures shall maintain at least, number eight, instead of 50. I would like to see that increased to something like 100. And I'm not sure if that's not workable on this property, but I would hope that it is. I'm kind of looking at it, that 50 foot buffer, a line that was drawn, I think that's what that was for, 50 foot typical.
You could do 50 feet.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, yeah. 50 feet from the property line, 100 feet from any house.
From any dwelling on adjacent property?
Right.
Is that, you have better knowledge of this particular site, is that obtainable? I don't want to constrain the property owner. Ms. Martin, perhaps you, your best.
I'm sorry, I was ready to go.
I'm gonna please step up to the podium. My question was, since you are, your property is surrounded by slightly smaller parcels, particularly on Giovanni and Maureen, maybe not so much on Madrone. Is it achievable to keep your animal-related structures 100 feet from dwellings on adjacent properties? Or is that an undue burden for you?
As far as the shelter goes, or barns, then yes, but as far as like an actual pasture fence that they might run into, because that, it looks like pasture fence is included in structures. And so that, you know, 50 feet is what is in the residential zone. And so, mind you, there's a natural buffer, because you have Maureen, and then there's houses on that side. Giovanni runs down that side, and then houses are on that side of that. And then to my, this side, it's completely bare, but John Bazania still owns it and everything. And then there's an entire road, Madrone, and houses are on that side. So you still then have a complete road of whatever the road is, like 20 or 40 feet wide, in addition to what essentially then is where you hit, like that property and everything, or my property. So I, I, as what Mr. Cahill said, I mean, I would prefer the 50 feet, because then it just is standard. If you want to do the 100 feet from a dwelling, I guess then I can get out and measure it. I don't know.
Barns and shelters in particular, I appreciate that.
Barns and shelters, yeah, I would say no problem, because you're not going to put them everywhere, but like eventually you're going to have a fence line at some point, like, so going along and measuring each point of the fence line.
So a 50 foot buffer for the corrals and pasture fences and 100 foot buffer for barns and shelters, 100 foot from adjacent, um, adjacent dwellings. So your neighbors across Giovanni have 100 foot from.
Yeah, for the barns and shelters, and then 50 feet for what would be.
And then 50 feet for, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. That's achievable. I don't want to.
I think that would be fine.
Yes, since we don't have standards, you know, we're, we're creating precedent here, and so we want to have something, should someone else come before us, then we can look back on our record and say, well, this is what we determined at the time, and so that we treat everyone as similarly as we can, so.
And you're saying it's from 100 feet from the dwelling?
Dwelling.
100 feet from their actual property line.
No, from their dwelling.
I would be, my neighbors, their actual dwelling.
Their dwelling.
Yeah, because their houses even sit back farther off of their lines than, you know.
Right, so if they have 75 feet, they're at the back of their property, and then you only have to assure 25 more feet.
I, I would suggest though, that we retain the 50 foot buffer on the entire property line for everything.
Corrals.
And then not to, and then the barns and shelters cannot be closer to an adjacent dwelling than 100 feet.
From, dwellings on adjacent properties, okay.
Yes.
Right, I agree, dwellings.
Okay. Yeah, the actual dwelling, not their property line. Yeah, that should be fine.
Okay.
And I can measure from them.
Oh, you had a.
I was just gonna clarify, so it's 100 feet from the neighbor's dwelling, so long as that is at least 50 feet from your property line.
Right.
For the barn and corrals.
But corrals and pasture fences, it's only the 50 foot?
Right.
Okay.
If it's a fence, it's 50 foot. If it's the little, like, they're gonna have a bear barn or a bear protection, which essentially a bear can't get into them and anything. And so that would be from the actual physical dwelling and anything, not the neighbor's property line, 100 feet from their dwelling, their house.
Right, so long as it's at least 50 feet off. Like, let's say your neighbor is 10 feet from the property line, or they want to put something 10 foot from the property line. I wouldn't want to have your barn be right there. So just saying that if.
Oh, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, so like if the dwelling is less than 100 feet from where that 50 foot.
Can we qualify it that at the time of my build, that it's whatever's within the existing 100 feet, so that if someone comes in and builds later than me, I don't need to have the burden to physically move an entire barn if.
Yep.
Decide to build on their, their setback.
You're, you're, you would be in an existing condition at that point.
Oh, okay.
But.
Okay.
I don't think we need to clarify that.
Don't need to clarify.
I, I don't think that in the condition, well, we, we could just say from existing structures.
Existing dwellings.
Existing dwellings.
Yeah, I don't want to count.
Because if someone else.
It's a dwelling, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Existing dwellings.
It's a dwelling and not necessarily a structure.
Yeah, so it would say, all hoofed animal-related structures, barns, shelters, corrals and pasture fences shall maintain at least 50 feet from all property lines, as per the site plan dated December 2024. And then all barns and shelters shall maintain at least 100 feet from all existing dwellings on adjacent properties.
In addition, uh huh. All barns, in addition, shall.
They can't, they also cannot be within 50 feet of the property line.
100 feet.
And then they're setback further if there's a dwelling.
Existing. And I think it's important to say existing dwellings.
Yeah.
Now, would that become an issue if the, if they ever needed to come back for a reapproval? Because it says if they wanted to sell off any acreage, they would need to come back for a reapproval on. But then, does the word existing, if their neighbors then built an ADU?
It would need to be considered at that time.
So.
Like a new situation. So it would go away.
Right.
Oh, the whole thing.
It would go, yeah, it would just be.
Like null this, and then you would restructure that, would I assume be the.
Based on like present standard, or needs.
So you can really think about this one with her, but then also like.
Right, yeah.
So we have, we've addressed the setback compliance, the numbers of animals. Oh, do we want to have a list of hoofed animals?
I'm inclined to as well. It doesn't have to be the smallest list, but it's, since this is a special permit, and we are agreeing with the owner about the miniature horses, I would like to keep the list to horses, llamas, and miniature, I don't know, are miniature horses different than horses? I don't know.
I think it's.
If there's any reason to delineate that.
Might as well state it.
They're all equine.
Yeah, yeah. So to be horses, llamas, and miniature horses, essentially what I'm trying to cover for exactly what you said. Now, it's a horse farm, and now it's a cow pasture that we're not necessarily managing for right now.
And if someone in the future wants to have a cow.
Yeah.
They come before us and give their explanation.
Yes.
As to why they want.
Could it just be equine, though, that we allow? And that would.
Be silly, but are llamas equine, is that?
I think she's.
Oh, sorry. I am no animal expert.
Fall under the hoofed animal category, so maybe saying all hoofed animals excluding cow, pig, you know.
I think that.
Those smelly ones.
I think that was my consideration.
Right.
I'm not a 4H-er, I didn't look this up in Google, but I think that animal waste from cows, a small dairy on seven acres raises alarms about nuisance issues that we don't want to go.
And what the purpose of having them.
Again, the applicant can come in with their reasoning.
Right.
Before the planning commission.
Exactly.
If that's what they want to do.
If they want to sell us.
But at this time, you're not inclined to include cows.
And that would be the reason, is because we've alluded to some things about odor and flies and.
Noise.
Those kind of nuisance issues, and we would be inviting that if we had 15 cows.
Okay.
To be clear, is, would llamas and equine cover your intended goals here? Or is that too limiting?
I don't know the definition of equine.
Yeah.
The definition of hoofed animal includes, you know, equine, a llama, a goat.
Uh huh. I'd rather go plain, you know, plain language, what's intended.
So, I mean, and that, that, that has a legal precedence to it, hoofed animals, it sits within code sections at the county, state, and even city level, you're on city R1A and RE. I'd be more comfortable to say hoofed animals excluding pig, cow.
Okay, got it.
And those are two, I understand what Mr. Smith is trying to get at and everything.
I'll just tell you, the most compelling thing I heard was the two witnesses, including the applicant, talked about $30,000 to bring in a masticator. That's very thick brush. And, and that's just like a match and your whole labor hood is up in flames.
I like your idea of the language saying exclusion of the animals that we are concerned about, because you never know, in the future, maybe the llamas aren't doing their job of enough forest management and, or not forest management, you get what I'm saying, fire control. Maybe you want to bring in goats. So I don't want to limit the possibilities for you there.
Okay.
Which, yeah, exactly. So that's why I'm like, do we need a limit? Is it just hoofed animals? Are we just going to go forward with the limit on the number and let it, she can pick her 16, whatever they may be? Or do we need to have a limitation? I'm disinclined to pick certain animals to exclude, like I don't want to say a pig, a cow, no, and but these ones, yes, the rest, yes.
I'd rather have something positive.
I'd rather just say nothing.
And then something that's not in the list. We could add alpacas, llamas, alpacas, goats, and then leave it at that. If someone wants to go outside of that, or if you want to go outside of that list, we hear from you and find out numbers, talk about manure management, address any other concerns. I just want to make sure that we're within, you know, your scope of, you know, what you desire now.
I think it's within the scope, but as far as a legal definition goes and what sits in the code, I think that's more of a burden to just state it as equine. Hoofed animals is what is, sits in the codes and what is well-understood. You could say, for example, equine llamas. I don't know if alpacas and llamas are the same animal. I know they're not the same animal, but I don't know if legally defined, they're considered the same animal. And so I don't, would have to do the research on that to know. I know my intent is for llamas, my intent is for equine. Goats, I, probably not. Maybe if I rent them, if I absolutely had to deal with some ground control issues. So yes, I would like, they need to stay in. So essentially, if I had to rent them, but I don't plan to keep them. So, but I don't, as far as the language goes and making sure, because there is a burden, this is a conditional use permit, and there is a burden then that it's not, you know, it's very different than zoning. And the zoning use, which this property already met the conditions for RE, just says, I mean, it's livestock, which includes a gamut. Livestock is actually one of the legal terms they use, which livestock, poultry, or other animals, which can include everything from a cow to a pig. I, I guess, you know, I'm comfortable with hoofed animals, and then you can put equine in there, llamas in there, alpacas. And I'm also okay with excluding cow and pigs. I don't want to have that.
Do pigs and, and cows have hooves?
They do. They're considered a hoofed animal and anything from, I did 4H, so I'm pretty sure they're a hoofed animal and anything. And I think a llama's a hoofed animal too, even though technically they like have a pad. I think, but it's like a, yeah, they have to be trimmed, but like they have a pad, I remember. So from being a kid, so, good old 4H.
So my inclination would be to just leave the language as is, the keeping of hoofed animals and insert a limit on number and not get into the weeds. I'm sorry.
I'm going to ask you to take a seat again. And since we've had you come back up and we are working on these changes based on, working with you here, I'd like to ask any other members of the public if you have comments on what we've been discussing as far as the types and limits of the animals on the property.
Hi. So I think you're, like, like Amy was saying, it's, it's getting off into the weeds. The hoofed animal definition is very simple, and the smelly animals are the cows and the pigs, primarily. I mean, llamas, if you have a bunch of them, they can be smelly, but if you're just having a couple for guardianship, it's, it shouldn't be an issue. So, you know, you're not, you're not needing to put so many restrictions on there, is my point. So, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else like to comment on that? Okay, great. Mr. Cahill, if we give a list, if we list horses, mini horses, and so on, are, you know, llamas, alpacas, at this time, the applicant is, is saying that she just wants to keep the horses and mini horses on her property. And I'm very comfortable with that. Should we be a little broader in this conditional use permit? As, there's obviously concern about something like, you know, a larger, and I don't want to get into the exclusions either, either, because that kind of opens us up.
It sounded like it made a lot of sense to allow hoofed animals excluding cows and pigs. That's simple, that's easy.
Mm-hmm. So we, so you're, that's your recommendation? Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm comfortable with that. I think I would rather say limited horses and mini horses and, because I, you know, since it's.
You can go either way. It's, it would be enforced.
If someone wants to change that, they come to us.
I mean, the one thing is, like, probably planning staff is not going to be able to tell a llama from a.
Alpaca.
So.
Alpaca's smaller.
I, I'm sorry, I didn't, I was caught off guard, because I think you're asking about excluding llamas and alpacas?
No, excluding, but excluding pigs, horse.
Okay, but they could have the others, because one of them is supposed to be good for keeping mountain lions at bay, which might be nice.
So you're in favor of having a slightly larger list?
As I understood it, included all hoofed animals except the pigs.
Okay. And I like that, except, again, as this changes hands, so suppose there's some hoofed animal that we hadn't heard about.
Then somebody's got to come back and say we won't have a dairy.
Turns out to be a problem.
But there is a difference in odor issues. I had years ago, run a goats come in, because it was, it was nice. And my neighbor has llamas and goats and on five acres or something. And it's not a problem, but if it was cows, it would be a problem.
Llamas and goats, not a problem, in your experience?
Exactly.
Okay.
And.
Okay.
I'm, I'm tending towards not putting any restrictions on the hoofed animals. The, the R1A doesn't have any. I mean, it has the, you know, the numbers that we're relying on to build this, to craft these conditions, but I don't think there's any need to restrict it. And I, I think that, you know, what we're concerned about is nuisance, which is already addressed in the conditions.
And so you think just limiting the numbers of, per acre, just like the R1A?
I mean, I, I honestly don't even think that we need to do that, but I'm fine with doing that.
Okay.
I also am fine with not clarifying anything of the hoofed animals. I think it's unnecessary, but I am inclined to put a number limit on there.
Okay.
I agree with Amy.
Okay, so that's, and then that was two per acre, and then not to exceed 16?
So I think what it would be is, it would just be as is, number six, and then it would finish, "The keeping of hoofed animals shall be accessory to the principal single-family rural residential use and shall not exceed a total of two animals per acre."
With not a maximum?
Shall not exceed a total of.
Not a number maximum.
No, because I liked Alyssa tying it to the, her idea of tying it to the acreage, because that's really important. If she does, Mr. Cahill said she may sell an acre off. If she continues to do that, I would like. If she continues to do that, I would like the, the animals to be limited to the acreage in the CUP.
I, I agree. I think that's a good approach.
May I interrupt?
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
To make a comment on that?
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry. What was your comment?
I just wanted to make a comment on the two per acre. I'm inclined to do what Ms. Keeney said for 16 at the max because of the concept that you're going with the R1A. The two per acre, we had had this discussion at the city level. We were concerned if it, if there would be an issue with, well, two have to sit on this acre and then two have to sit on that acre. And so, that was the concern.
Yes.
Your concern about it being parsed off, if I took land out, that is in condition number two, meaning if I choose that, that, so the parcels was two lots. It had two APN numbers. It now has one APN number because it got surveyed and the county, I just found out last week, put it into one APN, even though they haven't sent a letter. So, that's, so the one acre is not, you know, the use permit does not apply and everything. It, we're eventually probably going to do a lot split and take it off, and it'll just be held for investment and everything. The seven acres, my primary home, it's actually seven point, it's over that, it's almost 7.64, thank you. So, that, if that gets divided at all at any time by me or whoever, you know, is under this use permit, since it runs with the land, then the, you know, avoids the use permit, is my understanding. So, just to clarify what your concern was, I think it's addressed in the number two. So, yeah.
Two animals per acre. And then the, keep the 50-foot buffer, buffer on the property lines, but add that all, in addition, all barns and shelters shall maintain 100-foot buffer from existing dwellings. That's to number eight.
Existing dwellings on adjacent properties.
Existing dwellings on adjacent properties, right. 100 feet, okay. Anything else? Any other amendments to the conditions of approval?
I think I'm inclined to work for consensus to just to highlight and alert you to that direction, but I, I'm thinking about down the road. The next person that comes in and has five or six, seven acres and is.
Oh, the next application comes to us.
The next application comes in. And we wanted earlier to avoid going down this slippery slope. And the next time somebody comes in, and on the surface it looks identical because it's seven acres, but there's different geology, different geographics.
Topography.
Topography, you know, water usage and all kinds of things. And so, having more limits, like about the kind of animals and so on, can distinguish it from the next one that comes along. That's the only concern. Again, I'm inclined to go along with whatever the consensus is, but I'm thinking down the road, which was your concern earlier, what happens to the next applicant down the road? Are we opening up the floodgates to doing this all over the place? Or do we really have to go back to the council and say, hey, amend the law? And, and so, given this piecemeal, case-by-case approach, it seems like we want to have more specifics so we can distinguish this from other cases in the future. That's all. That's the consideration.
But it is the, that's, I said, the basis of a conditional use permit. We have to look at it in context. And so, you know, hopefully, the next application that comes for our review will have all the information we need to make sure that these kinds of buffers can be maintained, topography allows for that, and so on.
Ten day, 10 years down the road, somebody wants to have a dairy farm over the Hearn River.
And I think too, if we're opening the floodgates of applicants for this type of land use on similar-sized properties, then at that point, maybe we will consider amending the zoning because that would be a more effective way of handling it.
For some reason.
Right now, we're dealing with the one application.
Right. If the movement gets started for, yeah, more animal husbandry in Placerville, then, right, then, then we have a different issue instead of individual, case-by-case.
And I don't think that we need to hold up this application any longer for, for something like that.
I think we've covered, I'm quite comfortable with the improvements that we have made on the conditions of approval. All right. Would someone like to make a motion at this time?
No, because I didn't write it down.
Okay. I think I wrote everything down. I just do need to clarify, did we land on two animals per acre or 16 animals?
Two. Two, two per acre.
Maybe, maybe, do you think it would be clearer if we said, like, aggregate? Because, because I think part of the concern with that language was that it could be interpreted.
Sitting on an acre.
That you can only have two animals per acre, but if we said of the aggregate acreage or something?
Of 16 total?
No, of, of whatever the total acreage of the parcel is. So, two, two, two animals per acre of the total parcel.
7.64 acres?
Per total acreage?
Yeah. Does that clarify?
So, if they subdivide it though, the whole thing goes away.
Yeah.
If it's less than 7.46 acres, then, if they do anything, then this becomes null and void.
No, that's fine. What I was trying to clarify is that if there, if there is an interpretation that, and the applicant had brought up a concern that there, that the city had expressed that there could be an interpretation that she could only have two animals per acre on her site, if that's what, if I'm understanding that correctly, like.
Yeah.
They'd have to be spread around the parcel. I think.
No, I, I don't.
Is that, did I, did I hear that wrong?
I, I under, yeah, that's what she said, and it actually did change my mind on that to just say the 16.
Yeah.
Just, I don't want to get into the weeds of, like, legal terminology that's going to have to get reinterpreted later, and she's right. If, if she sells off any property, it has to come back before us, so. Might as well make it easy.
Okay. So, let me try and make this motion here. Okay. Sorry, it's a little different than I'm used to, so I'm just making sure that I'm reading this correctly. All right. I would like to make a motion to adopt the staff report as part of the public record. No?
We don't do that.
We've done that in the past, but I'm going to.
Attachment one.
Yeah. And make the following.
On the first page?
Attachment one.
That's intended to read verbatim.
Recommended findings for approval?
Right.
25 through 01, okay. I would like to make a motion that pursuant to the City of Placerville Code of Ordinances, Section 10-3-3, "Certain uses may be permitted in zones in which they are not otherwise outright permitted by this chapter, where such uses are deemed essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare and are in harmony with the various elements or objectives of the comprehensive general plan and are not detrimental to surrounding properties. The commission hereby finds, makes the following findings of approval for CUP 25-01 as listed on Page 5 of the May 6, 2025 Staff Report, and subject to the recommended conditions of approval." On the conditions of approval, we will add to the, number six shall read, "The keeping of hoofed animals shall be accessory to the principal single-family rural residential use and shall not exceed a total of 16 animals." Did I say that right? Not to exceed a total of 16 animals. Hoofed animals. And at the end of number six, add that the, the animal safekeeping has been constructed and the house is occupied. On number eight, remove, I guess not remove barns and shelters from the beginning. "All hoofed animal-related structures, barns, shelters, corrals, and pasture fences shall maintain at least 50 feet from all property lines as per the site plan dated December 2024, and barns and shelters shall maintain 100 feet from existing dwellings on adjacent properties."
Can you clarify a, a minimum of 100 feet?
Yes. Can you second, and then I'll clarify it?
A second?
Okay, good. So, to amend my motion to say.
All barns and shelters shall maintain a minimum of 100 feet from existing dwellings on adjacent properties.
I will accept the amendment to my motion.
Okay. We have a motion? Second? Catherine seconded? All right. I'd like to open the discussion. I, I was not tracking, I thought that we were going back to the keeping of hoofed animals, no more than two animals per area acreage of the parcel, and I thought we were not going to limit it to more than 16. I just want to make sure that that is the will of the commission, 16 or two per acre?
I thought it worked out to the same.
It does in this instance.
I've heard three explanations. One is two per acre, two per acre, but not to exceed 16. And the other was scrap the number per acre and just give it 16. So, my answer is whatever you want to do.
Well, you know, I don't think, I think it deserves a more serious consideration in the fact that this is, you know, the first time that we're considering this, and we're borrowing from the residential estate specification. And, please let me finish. The reason I prefer to have the language, not more than two animals per area acreage of the parcel, is that then that can be applied to the next application if it's suitable. So, in this case, you're right, it does work out to the same.
Two, two makes it specific, and it's applicable to the future.
So.
I'm more than happy to amend my, I thought we had landed differently. That was just a mishearing.
That's why.
I, I prefer the two per acre myself, so.
No more than two animals per area acreage of the parcel, because I, I heard the concern that, you know, we don't want to have to have one, you know, two animals here and there, so.
Yes. So, I'm, I'm happy to amend my motion if you're happy to, if you're interested to include a total, rather than a 16 number, two animals per area acreage of the total parcel.
All right. Very good.
Yes, I agree.
Please call the vote.
Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner Sylvester?
Aye.
Commissioner Stratton?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
I've, oh. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Good luck. We appreciate you working with us and explaining all the nuances and the specific things required. Gave us a lot of confidence that, in fact, the, there are sufficient protections for the environment, your neighbors, and, yeah, wish you best, best of luck. Thank you.
At this time, it's good to mention there, it is subject to a.
Subject to a 10-day appeal to the city council. So, let's take a break for five minutes. We will reconvene at 8:06. Consideration of a CUP to allow for operation of beauty shop uses. Mr. Cahill, this is, got a byline by Kristin Hunter. So, are you going to take this or is?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was actually.
Would you like to give us the staff report now?
Yes. So, before Kristin left, she did pretty much put most of the staff report together, so very thankful for that. And, oh, okay, sorry about that. So, yeah, Kristin put the staff report together, and I'm thankful for that. And this project is on 3150, 3152 Gilmore Street. For a long time, you know, it's a professional building, there's, and there still is. Half the building is occupied by a dentist, and there was another professional business on the other side. Market, real estate market conditions have changed over time. Property owners had difficulty renting out to another professional use and has proposed, instead, essentially like little incubator businesses, some very small beauty shops. So, there's been, the property's been, or I should say, the building has been internally subdivided on the one side for essentially like single stall beauty and nail care and all of that. So, it seems like a good way, you know, in terms of reuse of an existing commercial building. I think, you know, maybe the, the biggest issue here was parking, and, you know, the, you know, the, the cities, I would say too, when this building was approved, it, you know, the, the parking was what the parking was. Like, it wasn't quite, I don't think it was quite where it should have been. It was like less parking than there, than might have, than we think was required in 1981. In any event, if you look at strict application of the zoning ordinance, it says two, two parking stalls per operating chair, which then you would need 36 spaces, and, you know, but the, the site has 17. But it's, it's been that way for a long time, since 81. You know, we're proposing, we're recommending approval of this. I, you know, I would point out that there's already been the beauty shops there, but the property owner has been working with the city to legalize all of this, and there have been improvements made to the building and to the, to the site. It does look better than it used to, used to look, based on Google photos. And we think it is compatible with that business professional zone, you know, and with the conditional use permit, if parking does become a problem, it can be recalled, the use permit, and additional restrictions could be placed on, you know, on the, the number of stalls that are rented. I mean, but it's been operating, there, we haven't received any complaints. And that is pretty much it. We did, we are proposing some operating hours and days, and, you know, I think that's very common typical. And the reason why is because there are residential uses across the street, it's, you know, and around, you know, up the street. I think, yeah, so that's, that's why. So, Sundays, we said no, just Monday, yeah, Monday through Saturday. And the thinking was, well, for years, this has been business professional, and typically offices like that are closed on weekends, they're not open all hours. So, that's why, I mean, that's, that's what we're recommending, and if you have questions, happy to answer those for you.
Okay. On page eight, you came up with a different calculation for required parking and including, so there's three bullet points toward the bottom of Page Eight, and it says, "Two stalls per barber, beautician," which, you know, that really is a little similar to the project that's described. There's a dental office there, but these are estheticians, beauticians, and so on. And that came up with 18 parking stalls. So, I, I did not understand the math involved there. Where, what's the basis of that calculation? And how did you arrive at 16 parking stalls? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure.
Not sure where that, what that's based on?
And I'm, and maybe it's just a matter of misinterpreting something here, but I think the bottom line is, the staff is making a case for trying out the reduced, allowing the use with the 17 stalls, and if it's a problem, we'll have, we'll be back to the planning commission.
Okay. Any other questions for staff on the staff report? Okay. Are you the applicant? Hi. I'd like to invite. Hi, I'd like to invite you up to the podium to present your project and answer any questions that we have for you. Good evening.
Good evening.
And you're Mr. Rondon?
Rondoney. I brought some papers here to illustrate so we could follow along, page number, if that's all right.
Staff has to review, did you provide a copy for public review?
Well, some of the stuff I've emailed to Kristin before she went away. I mean, some of it's just pictures.
It's okay, please provide it to staff and. Are there copies?
One for staff, okay.
It's okay to hand out exhibits.
Right, but we do have to give it to the public to review, so. So you've handed us some exhibits and. And this top page looks like this was part of your application and so summary, Tuesday and photos. Okay, so the, what the applicant has handed us is a copy of one page that is from your application and then a listing of other uses.
No, I was talking about some of this.
So go ahead.
To make it easier, we'll cut to the, if we can, I could just like start blabbing and you guys can cut me off.
I'm sorry, could you speak into the, let me.
Is that better? Oh, man, okay. So there's, there's, just to clarify a couple of issues. So the building was purchased, there was a dentist in one side and a doctor, a physician in the other side. And it's been in that use its entire existence. One doctor bought it, built it with a dentist friend. They retired, rented it to their friends that were doctors and dentists, and then that was it. Upon, I purchased the building in 2020, I believe. The doctor that was on the right-hand side, his business was failing and he moved. And if you look on page three, things have changed. So over the last 50 years, when we were all kids, or at least I'm old enough that when I was a kid, doctors had private practices that they sold. Their client lists had value, so you could sell that client list and you could sell it to a new up-and-coming doctor, and then their doc, their patients would go to them and then they would continue their practice. But that's not how the world works anymore. So now insurance companies run practices. So if you, your doctor retires, you don't get to call your doctor and find out where to go. You call your insurance company, they tell you what doctor you can go to. So that, that system has somewhat changed. Now, in the dental world, it's still the same. A dentist can sell their practice and their client list and all that goes with it. So I don't expect that the dentist will leave, I expect he'll sell his practice when that goes on. After looking at trying to rent the building out, there is currently 15 medical buildings available vacant in Placerville, totaling 80,343 square feet of vacant space in the city of Placerville. A couple of those might be in county of Placerville, maybe they might be, you know, past Missouri Flat or something. But for the most part, those are all in the city of Placerville. And they're all a combination of, of medical office or slash vice versa. It's just after COVID and with the development of how the medical industry has changed, that's changed just significantly. Additionally, here in Placerville, everything is really built, everything is really driven by Marshall. So my wife, my wife works for Marshall, she's part of this community. If, if any building is really open here, it's got to be rented by Marshall, a Marshall physician or, if they don't have the need, there's just no need, which is probably a reason why there's so much vacant medical space. Additionally, on page four, you have one, two, three, four, five, six, six other, what are called beauty salons, true beauty salons or beauty shops, operating in the same zoning as my zoning, which is business professional, which was what I was told was the issue at hand. And then you have one actually operating in a residential space. Now, I've been told one of those may have a conditional use permit. I'm not sure if the other do, but it seems there's a, there's a significant number of businesses operating in the same zoning I am here in Placerville. I have, the parking was brought to the attention, I tried to explain that it's not really a beauty shop. So what I have isn't really defined in your, in your space. It's called the salon suites. And what it is, is that they are individual rooms where individual proprietors, basically small business owners, operate their own individual business behind a door. Essentially, it's like what you have right across the street. So if you look at that building right across the street, it's professional suites. And at one time, I'm sure that was a professional office building where one lawyer or one professional might have rented out the whole building. But now that that's not needed, that kind of square footage isn't needed, people are working from home, people are working remote, they've turned it into people that just are renting one office because they just need to get out of their noisy house, away from their barking dogs and their crying kids, and they're going to go operate their one business in their one, in their one space. And they're going to rent 100 square feet instead of having to be on the hook for all 3,000 square feet. And this is the same concept, it's just more slated toward the beauty industry. The nice thing is all these girls don't work at the same time. So for the, Mr. Cahill kind of alluded to that I've been operating. I've had seven out of eight suites rented for over a year, not knowing that a conditional use permit would have been required. And we haven't had a single complaint come in about parking. The only parking problem I have had was neighbors parking in the parking lot overnight and not moving by the time business started in the morning. So I took some pictures kind of at random when I was there. There's one on March 18th at 3:00 PM on a Tuesday, and there's plenty of parking in there. There's one on a Wednesday. On that Wednesday picture, two of those cars are mine. So those don't, like that van is a guy I had working there and the green SUV is mine, so it's mostly vacant. That Monday picture, there's still spaces. And then I wanted to address a big issue, which was the operating hours, but I'll come back to that, I'll circle back to that. But if you look on Sunday, there's a Sunday evening pic that we were there, and the parking lot's totally, totally empty. So most of the girls don't work on the same schedule. All of them are operating their own business. Some of them might work Tuesday, Wednesday that week, some of them might work Monday, Friday. There's one girl that does interior design and she's only there on Fridays. I think I listed their schedules in there on page one of this. You can see one of them's there, nine to four every day with an occasional weekend. One girl's Wednesday through Saturday, one girl's Monday through Friday, one girl's Thursday, Fridays only. So the reason the parking hasn't been an issue is because while half of the girls might be there working, the other half are gone, they're just vacant, right? And that's how it works because the demand of what he's talking, or what Mr. Cahill's talking about, of a beauty shop, a pure beauty shop, you have an owner of a beauty shop and they want people on those chairs. They want chairs filled, they want technicians working. If you can't work that day, they'll rent that chair out to another girl to fill that void, right? So that there's somebody in that, working that chair and in that chair every day. So ideally, he's correct that on a regular, typical beauty shop form, it would be one person for each chair, one person in the seat, right? But in this case, they're not, it's not built that way. There's eight individual businesses, or should be, in theory, eight individual businesses operating at different times. And that's why the parking hasn't been exceeded. Also to clarify on the numbers a little bit, there's 19 spaces on the site. I think they got the 14 or 17 from the site plan, but there was 19 on the spot in the parking lot. And according, one of the issues that they raised was, in the language of the conditional use permit, it states that if the use creates a parking-ish, parking disadvantage. But the building was built in 1981 with a parking disadvantage. It was, it could not be built today in that form. If it was built based on 2121 square feet for each side, each side is required in the zoning paperwork to have one space for every 150 square feet of building. So it would have 14 or 15 to each side. I think 15, depending on how you guys round numbers, or the planning department, however they would round the numbers. So the parking deficiency exists already. The dentist should have 15 spaces to his side already. The other side should have 15 spaces to it, but it was built with 19. The only reason it's able to even survive in the state that it's in is because this, this model, this business model allows a rotation of people, cannot overload the parking lot. So I think that, you know, the photos show that like, even though it, mathematically, I get that it makes sense in a true business or a true beauty shop format, that the parking lot would be overwhelmed. But in theory, the parking lot should be overwhelmed with just the one side of business already. And in, in theory, it kind of is, like that guy takes up too much space, to be honest. His employees should park on the street for the clients and they don't. So occasionally, they'll run into where like, hey, there's nowhere to park. It's very, very rare. In regards to business hours, I also want to address, because this is kind of important. I've been operating with zero business hours the entire year that I've, I've been there. And almost never is there more than one car or two cars in that parking lot on a weekend. And if there are four or five cars, they're neighbors' cars. They're not, they're not as a result of the parking lot or of the business operating. The, the times that most of these girls work weekdays or weeks, they're scheduled hours. And the, the weekend work is mostly one of two things. It's a one-off, somebody's getting married, they need their hair and nails done that weekend, and so they're doing a weekend, opening up for a weekend. Somebody has an emergency, something like an eye, you know, they got lashes done, they're going to inflict, some sort of infection to the glue, and so they're going in to take them off. Or their hair turned orange and they're redying or something. I don't know exactly, it's not my world. But it's a one-off, or it's somebody who's starting up. And so there was, for the last year, we had one girl, for the most part, who was working nights after 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM on weekdays, because that's when she would get off work, and then she'd work on weekends. That was probably the only girl I've ever seen there on a weekend in the last year and a half. And I go into the building, you know, three, four times a week. That girl has, has left and a new girl has come in and she works, there's one girl that works Friday and Saturday and Sunday, and that's because that's what her hours allow. Those are usually your startup businesses. Those are the girls that are just getting into the industry and trying to make a business for, make a life for themselves, right? They're starting a fresh new business and that's the time they can work. Whether it's because of school or additional, they're going to do another job to pay for their actual bills while they build a book and, and get their career started. So I, I'm not opposed to setting hours, but I think it's important to note that taking away days is taking away a livelihood of, of people that are working there. Small businesses that are in, they're Placerville businesses, these are residents of Placerville or the surrounding area, and these are, you know, these are girls work, basically just trying to work. Saturday, I mean, I think when I, when I was in the meetings with Mr. Cahill, I suggested like nine to nine, I was like, but that was like, I'm shooting off the top of my head, right? We didn't have hours. And it never became a problem because the girls don't want to work that late either. Nobody wants to work at 10 o'clock, so there's nobody in there. What was I going to say about that? So I would, I would, if I could propose hours, I don't know what they proposed, but I would have proposed like nine to nine on weekdays and maybe nine to seven on Saturdays and Sundays. I think it's inappropriate to take away Sunday. There's a church 200 feet away that probably brings 200 cars in it a Sunday. I mean, and my building is along the side of 49. It's not like there's no traffic during any days of my, the week on, in this area. There are residences across the street, one of them runs a business out of, or some sort of business. But I actually have the, I don't know if they were included, but the page, if you go to page 17 and 18, my two neighbors that are across the street wrote letters of recommendation for me in, in support of continuing the, to allow the business because they've seen the, the building transform from what it was to what it is now. They haven't seen any parking problems at all. And, you know, they're happy to see the girls come to work and, and a thriving business across the street in the town of Placerville. I mean, there are some pictures of like what the building looked like when I bought it, and I think that's important to note that, you know, I'm a resident of Eldorado County, I'm not a resident of the city of Placerville. I live in Eldorado Hills, my wife works here at Marshall Hospital. But we're a part of this community, you know, regardless. We put $150,000 into this, this structure. And I, I mean, I'm embarrassed to say it was cosmetic. Apparently cosmetic doesn't mean cheap. But just the pain alone on this structure was probably $20,000 because of the height of the elevations and whatnot. Oh, and then on the last part, just kind of highlighting, I don't know if she included that either, but I did email her when I did have a issue with neighbors parking in the parking lot, because they were leaving them until like 4:00 PM. They were just parking all day, right? They had a day off, they would put their car in my parking lot and leave it. I guess I could have been a standard landlord and just put up a tow sign and just started towing vehicles. But I am a part of this community, and so the letter I supplied, I put on their windshields and I included it, it's the last page of this packet. And it just asked them to move the cars during business hours or during normal hours, I think I put seven to seven. And I was happy to let any neighbor use my parking lot after dark because, you know, the parking is short in that area if you're a residence. And if you needed parking or somewhere to be, I had no problem with them using it, I just wanted them to try to move them out during daylight hours. And that's because I'm a part of that community and I want to continue to be a part of the community. During the Christmas light, tree lighting, every single space in my parking lot was full, and I was happy that it was. When it snows here, all those people that can't get up that hill park in my parking lot. And so I don't want to start towing cars or anything or, or, you know, be a tyrant, but it, but that was the only issue I've ever had in regards to parking. And those cars park regularly over the weekend. So in regards to turning down service on Sundays and Saturdays, the fact that most of the girls don't work Saturdays and Sundays, and the dentist doesn't work at all, even on Fridays sometimes, so we're only talking about really a parking deficiency on Monday through Thursday that could possibly exist. On Saturdays and Sundays, it would kind of lead the argument that it's okay to look at the neighbors' cars in my parking lot, but not look at one employee's two cars, right? Like, I, I fail to see how that would, would, would jive on like shutting down the business for a Saturday or a Sunday, that the one girl that shows up to work on a Saturday and her one client, that, those two cars would be too much. But the four cars from the neighbors could sit there and that would be okay. So I'd like to have, I mean, in, for me and for the girls that do work weekends, I'd like to at least give them the opportunity to still have income. Because I don't operate a business in there, right? Like I'm not showing up to work, I'm showing up to mob.
Oh, thank you. I have some questions about the configuration of your business. And I want to say at this point, I did do a visit, a site visit, and that was on Sunday, there were zero cars. I did not count the spaces. So you have striped for 19?
That's correct.
Unless there's a space to turn around, I, you know, I saw that in some.
No, there's.
Fire conditions.
No, there's no space.
Oh, it's not, it's not a designated turnaround, it's just not striped, okay.
Oh, you mean that on the back corner.
Next to the dump, dumpster?
Dumpster, that's just an extra parking space.
It's not striped, but, so I thought that was your turnaround spot. So, but, but you counted as 19?
Yes.
Okay, that's, that's fine. And I agree, one of the letters of support that was in our packet talked about what you've done with the property, and I agree with that. It looks fantastic. I also want to give you a tip of the hat for a little fire-wise landscaping, getting, you know, clearances and so on. It looks really good. And I, you know, honestly, I don't think, I don't have a problem with the, the use of a beauty shop. But I am, I do have heartburn over the parking. So I want to ask you a few questions. First, in the application, it says that there are 18 suites, and it's your desire to have every one of those suites rented if possible?
So not, not really, there's eight.
So then on page one of.
If I can clarify.
This was in our packet and.
Yeah, I'll clarify that.
Also you provided us again, so there's eight.
There's currently eight. The 3150 has eight suites. 3152 has 10 more, but it's a dentist. And I have no reason to believe that the dentist will leave or sell his business or, or vacate. I mean, it's possible, he's old, so he could retire and not sell it, but I would assume he'll sell his business when he retires. I only put, I did, I did apply for 18 because there was a fee to apply. And I was like, well, if this guy leaves and I can't fill it, if he doesn't sell his practice, then there's a good chance I can't find someone else to rent it. Because there.
As a dental practice.
There are three or four other dental practices in Placerville, and they'll probably absorb his business before somebody else moves in. his business before somebody else moves in. The goal for me is for him to sell his practice. That, for me as the landlord, that's my best, that's my best option, is he sells that and I never go vacant. If he goes vacant, then I have to remodel the, well, I have to just change out the floors, do the same thing I did to the other side, which was floors, paint, and ceiling tiles. But that's still a lot of money. I mean, floors, paint, and ceiling tiles are more than you think. So
So you're not planning on evicting him?
No. No, no, no. He's got, he's got a year on his lease still. He's, he had a five-year lease. I think I signed the lease in 2020. So he has like till the end of 2025 on his lease. But I don't expect him to leave. I expect him to renew or sell to another
Today
Specifically sell his business.
Yeah. Today you have eight salon suites, and one of which is vacant.
Pardon?
You listed on page one of planning department, parking questions.
Yeah, one is vacant.
Says there's eight suites, one of which is vacant.
Right. Which was the case when I, when I emailed this.
Okay. But it's filled now?
Huh?
Suite four is now filled?
Suite four is filled. Suite five is vacating at the end of the week. Suite seven, uh, what is it? Suite eight just vacated.
So you have
I have a couple moved.
Usually have one open.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the operating hours that you list next to the various suites, those are, those are optional, right? The occupant, you don't define those working hours. That's what they tell you they're going to operate, right?
Right.
All right.
Right. Well, they would tell me
The only problem I see with us as the city specifying working hours, there is one occupant of suite two who you say works both Saturday and Sunday from 10 to 5. I can see that, you know, maybe we should try to accommodate something like that, reasonable, shorter weekend hours.
For sure.
But it looks like everybody pretty much is within the nine to nine
The new girl though that moved into three
We listed in our conditions of approval, correct?
The new, the new tenant that's in three works Saturday and Sundays nine to five or nine to six. But again, we're talking about, when I say nine to six, she might come in for an hour or two. Right? Like, she's going to try to schedule in that block.
Mm-hmm.
Those are the blocks they schedule for. If they don't get anyone scheduled, they don't show up.
But as far as, what, what we, our responsibility is to craft conditions for this use and specify. And so as long as we give ample time for someone to conduct their business on the weekends, nine to five is reasonable for most of what you, your experience with your tenants at this building.
I would prefer nine to seven if it was a
On weekends.
On the weekends.
And nine to nine during the week?
Right. But again, even though with those businesses, and I, I just want to reiterate, I had zero operating hours. The girls could go in at four in the morning if they wanted to. I've never seen anyone, I haven't seen them show up past seven many times, maybe once on a weekday in that year that they've been operating. So even though I didn't put any restrictions on their hours, it's not like they're coming in at 10. I just want to make sure if they get an emergency call, like, hey, you gotta fix my hair before I go to the Bahamas tomorrow, and it's 8:00 PM, they're, they're not violating the city's policy. That's all.
Okay.
I don't want them to be in defiance of the city
So you have, how many you have? I see if you, okay. I don't have any other questions for the applicant. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you very much. Really appreciate you taking the time, coming down and, and presenting, walking us through your, your proposal.
You're welcome.
Unless there's something you want to add.
I will, I guess I'll just add that, well, I don't know if I need to, so maybe I should shut.
No, once you sit down, it's over. You can't come back.
No, we're good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Actually, your application package was very thorough and appreciate the detail.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, anyone in the public like to comment on this proposal? Welcome back.
Thanks. Ruth Carr, City of Placerville. I would just like to say, I really appreciate all of the things that he's done with the property and how our city in general, we have so many vacant commercial spaces, and it is so difficult to rent large spaces anymore. Because like he says, you know, there's a lot of people working from home and not a lot of use for large spaces. So having more of this co-working environment is definitely a net asset to the city. And I'm not really sure what the requirements are with regards to, you know, the, the people that are renting the stations, but I know that they are, they have to be licensed, and I know that they go through ridiculous amounts of training for, you know, cleanliness and all the things. And so, you know, those are going to be kind of your ideal tenants for that kind of situation. I also think that the concept of restricting the hours is like completely unnecessary. We all live in Placerville. The red carpet gets rolled up at eight o'clock latest, let's be honest. And, you know, people, myself included, I work for myself. So, you know, we want to have time with our family. If there is somebody out there that's working two or three jobs and trying to get their foot in the door and build their book of business, it, it really would be onerous to restrict that. So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Sure, come on up.
Is it possible to add 30 seconds?
I got no words to go. No, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Sorry. I just wanted to piggyback. She brought something up that made me realize something. There was two or three things, but the first was, this is a need for Placerville. So one of the things I highlighted was there was a lot of vacant medical space, but I had a waiting list before this conditional use permit hit me. I had a waiting list of girls to fill those suites. They left because I couldn't fill them. I didn't want to fill them because I didn't want to kick someone out and say, hey, I know I just signed a lease with you, but you gotta leave tomorrow if this didn't get approved. So there's more than enough need or demand in the city of Placerville for this type of business. The other thing I was going, based on what she had said, they, all these girls are licensed, all the technicians or men, girls or boys, they are licensed with the state cosmetology boards, and they're subject to state inspection. So they can have somebody from the Department of Cosmetology drop in at any time to, to inspect them for cleanliness or meeting their, their standards and, and state requirements. And the last thing I was going to say was, I don't know if it's in your packet or not. When I submitted the application, one of the trades was tattoo for like permanent makeup. And when I saw on this, the announcement, it wasn't there. But there is, tattoo isn't allowed use in the application. It was, the only thing they had me mark off was therapeutic massage. They're like, you can't rent to a massage person. So I scratched that off. But that was listed on my application. I just didn't see it in the application for public notes. I don't know if that makes sense. In the, in the public notice, it listed like hair, esthetician, nail. Tattoo is not on there. I don't know if that makes a difference or not. But if it does, that is one of the uses that's in demand.
Sorry, just to clarify, when you say tattoo, you mean permanent makeup?
Right.
Okay, perfect.
Well, I guess they're the same.
Tattooing?
They really are the same. The way, actually, the way this happened, the way I got to this point was because somebody needing a tattoo went to the city and asked them. And they said, that's not zoned for tattoo, nor anything else that's in there. That's how we got to this point. But, so there is a need for people that don't want to rent an entire tattoo shop, but do want to operate close to home. And that was her issue. She was driving all the way to Folsom to work in a tattoo shop, and she lived one block from my building. But I do specifically mean permanent makeup. But they are the same. Thank you. Thank you for the extra time.
Would the public care to comment on that addition? Feel free, if you have a response.
I have several hairdresser, nail salon, and I'm not sure why massage would be excluded from that. But people that, you know, friends and people in my life that do these things, and it is a huge, huge need. And I have to imagine that it would also go along with a benefit to the city on the business license side of thing and sales tax. So just another thought.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I'll close the public comment portion and bring it to the commission for consideration. First, Ms., Mr. Cahill, can, I, I am having a hard time finding the, I remember reading in the staff report about the exclusion of some of the uses. And can you help us sort that out? See, we're talking on page six about personal service, hairstylist, nail technician. I can't see where we excluded the tattoo and I can't
It's not listed in the
I don't know if the tattoo one was excluded intentionally. It was the, the massage business, probably, I mean, that I do know is listed as like adult business, even if it is an adult business. But, yeah, I mean, that's, I think it's, it has its own design, it's, it falls under a different designation.
Yeah, I, I thought it was in the staff report and I, I just can't put my finger on it right now. But, yeah, permanent makeup, that's something else as opposed to traditional
I don't think that was intended to be prohibited.
Okay, so that
I think that's the concern, that we're not, the concern being that we're not disallowing him to do that, right?
Right. But we do have a list of
There is et cetera on there, right? So
Including hairstylist, nail stylist, makeup artist, esthetician, spray tan, hair removal and lash stylist. And then, so that's under approve, condition number one. And also that says 3150 Gilmore Street. And I was wondering, we should probably include 3152 as well, since that may be available in the near future. So getting back to the application as a whole, I, you know, I, I think this is a compatible use. My only problem is this parking. And, you know, thank goodness, we, we haven't had any, or the city hasn't received any complaints so far about parking. And it does sound like Mr. Rondon is, you know, accommodating his neighbors when the parking lot is available. You know, the, I was not real comfortable with the condition of limiting the operational hours because those, you know, late hours on any day of the week, actually, there's, there's just not that much use. It would be, I, I think he mentioned, you know, one operator and one, you know, client maybe for that day, not, not a full parking lot after about even 9:00 PM on Monday through Friday, or after six or seven on Saturday and Sunday. So I'm not sure that restricting the hours of operation is something that we need to consider. But I am very concerned about expansion of the occupancy. Right now, there are eight suites plus the dental office. So eight suites times two, an operator and a client, you know, 16 spaces would be required under our parking requirements. Plus the dentist, about four spaces. So that's about, you know, more or less 20 spaces, let's say, for argument's sake. And there's only 19. We haven't had the, the complaints, so obviously the pressure is not on, but as this expands and they reach more like, you know, 90% occupancy of the, all the, the area available, you know, it could be a concern in the, in the future.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So I think there's, is some unknown. So that is why we had proposed condition number three, which is, you know, giving a report back to the commission in 12 months. Are, are we seeing parking problems or not? So that, I think was more, let's, let's see if it works.
But I'm afraid, I mean, I think that would be a good thing to check in. But if Mr. Rondon goes to the expense of, you know, converting more space, if it becomes available, that's a big expense. And are you saying that, is your, your thought that in a year, he'll have more information about what's going to happen with that
That's right.
Other tenant and whether or not he really can expand to the full 18?
Yeah, and if there aren't any problems, you know, that, hopefully, that, that's the ideal outcome, is that we can report back and just say, hey, it's been working out great, and leave it at that.
And that's right, why, pardon, but that's why right now, 3150 is the only one listed in condition number one. That's what I understood to be the case. So we're not really, it's kind of like what we did at grocery, at the Apple Farm place, the center, how they had that fast food thing, but it wasn't really in play right then. And so we looked at it in the, the current application, which this one is the 3150 is what staff is recommending we approve with the parking as described, with a check back in, in 12 months. And I thought that was sufficient when I read through. I totally am sympathetic to the parking, but I think he's done a really great job showing what the use is right now at pretty high vacancy. And I agree that the style that he's using, which I agree is a really good use for the community, will lend to it not being a packed parking lot from the morning to the evening, all the way through the evening.
If a conversion of 3152 was to take place, that would require a building permit and then also review by planning commission?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, it would be an amendment, it'd be the same use permit, but he would
But an amendment.
Right.
Okay. Well, that starts to care, take care of my concern. I think, you know, where, it's table two. Yeah, table two talks about onsite parking calculations. And then, okay, assuming both existing units have full occupancy, strict adherence would require 36 parking stalls. So, but we're not at full occupancy. We're at, right now, we have 3150 with its eight suites. And then 3152 is the dental office operating as it has for years. No change, no, he's not bringing in another partner, having more chairs occupied, no increase in the use. So I think I understand what's going on now. I think it's the way it was presented in the staff report, that the desire was to go ahead and fully occupy both 3152 and 3150.
And secondary to that is, I, I would like to change, or propose to change to the proposed hours of operation, because I think they're a little bit limiting for the style that, that they're offering.
Would you like to change or just
I'd like to, I'd be fine deleting. I really would prefer not to have any, but I'd at least like to offer some flexibility there, particularly on the Sundays, but even I'd like to start it earlier. So I don't really like them as proposed. So I'm, I'm down to just eliminate number four.
Anyone else?
I guess I, maybe that I live on the top of Sacramento Street, so I pass by that place a minimum twice a day for years. And the changes have been so subtle, I don't notice much of anything beyond the landscaping work. And I've gone up and down Gilmore on a few occasions and don't notice a parking problem. I guess in response to your concern, I'd mention that one of the things in the city's policy statements, and I don't remember what it's called, the general statement, objectives, standards, whatever it is for the city, but one of them is about we promote business and want to be business friendly. So I like what the staff has said, which is, we'll come back in 12 months. So we don't have to speculate about what might happen. We have 12 months to wait and see. But I encourage this kind of project. It's compatible with the neighborhood because it's been there for a long time. And I do remember going into that parking lot when, I think it was Tustin, was it? Karen Tustin was a city council member, mayor, et cetera. Her husband, I think, had the dental practice. So, I mean, I remember back in those days, maybe 10 years ago. That's why I would think that waiting until 12 months will give us a chance to see if there's any kinks in this plan.
Well, as it's being used with the eight suites, you know, we're just not that far off of what would normally be required. I don't, we don't have a calculation of just for 3152 square footage, but I think it's reasonable to assume, you know, a dentist, a hygienist, office staff, you know, one, maybe two, so let's say six, as many as six extra cars. There are 19. 16 would be required if all eight suites had an operator and a client all at the same[1788.01] all at the same time. Really, we're not that far off of what would be required by the city for our parking ordinance. So I'm very, I'm much more comfortable with that now that I know that the intent is not to go ahead and convert the old dental office. And, yeah, I like, I like the idea of just eliminating condition number four.
Okay.
I agree with eliminating condition number four. The only reason I could see it is since it's in like a residential area, but I really don't see any situation where a tenant would be repetitively out there at 1:00 AM doing someone's hair. Exactly. And then on the point about the services that were removed in the number one, I agree. I feel like we could probably just remove all of the classifications because beauty standards change so frequently, like lash stylist didn't exist 10 years ago. Or just add like including but not limited to, to provide that flexibility.
My only problem with that is I don't want to go in violation or conformance with other parts of our ordinances.
I think that's a great addition.
What's that?
I think that's a great addition or revision to the condition one.
Mm-hmm.
To just take out some of the specificity. And I have no concerns about the other revisions that we're discussing. Well, I did want to just ask, do you happen to know if this removing number four would be in violation of any city standards?
Again, that, if it is an issue over the next 12 months, then you can impose hour restrictions and day restrictions if you want.
And would, would eliminating in number one, including here, including in the listed ones and just having it say independent beauty shop, personal service uses at 3150, would that be sufficient?
That's fine.
Okay.
Okay.
I think that's cool then.
I'm not finding that, that limitation on services.
I think it's a good point of, does it make it to manage for, you know, outdated things or forward thinking things? So I think that's a good addition.
All right. And what was that, say, the operation of independent beauty shop, personal service?
Uses at 3150 and then goes on.
At 3150, including but not limited to, or just remove the speci-
The specificity and keep it to beauty and personal service. I think that encompasses what our code references, right?
Okay.
I would be happy to make a motion. Does anyone want to discuss further?
Oh, go ahead and make the motion. Since we have a second, we can open it for discussion.
Okay, that sounds good. I would like to make a motion that we make the following findings in support of conditional use permit 24-07, establishment of a beauty shop, personal uses within the business professional zone, with the details listed in numbers one through seven on page nine of the staff report, and that we conditionally approve CUP 24-07 located at 3150 Gilmore Street, based on the project information and findings included in the staff report, and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in attachment one of the staff report dated April 15th, 2025, as amended. The amendments shall be that in number one, it should read approval of CUP 24-07, that says six, but I believe it should say seven, 07, authorizing the operation of independent beauty shop, personal service uses at 3150 Gilmore Street, APN number, and within the business professional zone. Approval is limited to compliance with the project description and the conditions included herein. And then eliminate number four, which lists the business hours, so there will no longer be a condition number four there. And everything else looks good, as long as you feel that I covered all of his uses that he can do with, in there. Okay, thank you.
We have a motion and a second from Mr. Smith. Any further discussion? Please call the vote.
Barakini?
Aye.
Vice Chair Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner Sylvester?
Aye.
Commissioner Stratton?
Aye.
And Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Okay, five zero. Congratulations and good luck. This is subject to a 10-day appeal to the city council, but as you've presented, it's very clear, you know, what it is you intend to do and, you know, obviously a good use of otherwise vacant parcel. Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming down and taking time to walk us through all the details.
Well, thank you for all your support and I appreciate your, your time and your duty to your community. Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You as well.
Why do I keep going to that? It's on top. Item 11 is continued items of which we have none. Number 12 is new business, of which there is none. And so that takes us to 13, matters from commissioners and staff. We'll start with staff reports and I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Cahill.
I do not have a staff report for you this evening.
You do not?
No.
Okay.
We do have a meeting the next, in May.
Uh, no, or, the 20th?
20th?
No.
No, no second meeting for the month of May? Our next meeting is scheduled for the 3rd of June?
Yeah, because there's some budget hearings going on and I, yeah, and we don't, I don't, we don't have enough really, but there's budget meetings as well that the council took your slot.
Okay. And Ms. Watkins-Howey, do you have anything, any staff reports for us?
I do not.
Okay.
I just noticed, if I might ask the staff, across the street, the building is being painted, anything new coming in to, oh, it's a Rockefeller?
You know, as, I think there is.
Well, let's move on to planning commission matters, 13.2, and I can answer that. I heard through the grapevine that yes, there is something going on in there.
Good.
All right. Yeah, the painting going on, also painting on both walls, actually. So planning commission matters, we had.
Very brief, this is.
Attachment.
Three seconds explanation of me just sharing. I pulled these three lists from our websites, and this is really in the spirit of Mr. Drobisch asking if the railroad bridge was on the list. And I had just been trying to organize these. I made them into new Excel's that are a little more sortable, and I'm just working on kind of cleaning them up and looking through. But I thought it'd be helpful, especially for the new commissioners, to have these lists printed out, to have, the first one is the historically significant residences, buildings, things like that. You can kind of look and see, so a lot of things on Main Street, just gives you some information. And I can get these to you, or maybe you have these electronically or maybe you don't. But either way, these links have tons of information about each place, which is what I would love to see our, our stuff get to. And then the second one is our residential list. So I believe I had said at a recent meeting that I can't find a list of the other, why can't I think, residential zones or residential.
Historic district.
Yeah, districts, districts is the word I was looking for, sorry about that. I have not been able to find a list of the districts. So this is what I see as our only list of, our, our list out there for people to find their address on for being in historic district, so.
Yeah, I don't know, I've never found a list, I've just seen the map.
So there's the map. This one is actually somewhat of a list, and if you click on those yellow ones that say Coloma and Cedar Ravine, it's a whole listing of them and details about the housing. It's really beautiful, it's very old, but it's like a beautiful document of what, of what the information that I think we want to collect and preserve about our houses. So some of them have that there. I just can't find the other two. So I don't know where they are. I've only ever found Cedar Ravine and Coloma Springs.
You know, it may not have been done. I didn't bring those notes with me tonight, but there was a small group that organized, and I think they're the ones who developed that information and had the city post it, so, but they only got, you know.
Yes, totally, totally. And then the third list is the one compiled by, I believe it's Stan Morrison, Dee Owens, I believe are the names. And it's historic markers that they put together on our website and have different information. Again, I haven't touched any of this, this is just compiling and sort of cleaning up a little bit to some of the more really funky Excel outputs. So anyway, this is my start to where, it struck me, like I said, when Mr. Drobisch asked if the railroad was, uh, bridge was on there. And so this is a way, like I said, especially for the new commissioners, to get familiar with some of the historic resources in there. And just falls in line with me starting to clean up the documents in general on there and get a, wrap my brain around what's there and what's missing, what needs to be developed.
And is the bridge on there?
I believe it is, yes, yes. So I'm pretty sure now, because I thought, oh, it is on there, but then it's maybe listed with the railroad car that's there. Okay, yeah, here it is. It's on page two at the top, Constitution Railroad Plaza, located behind Shell, find a caboose, 967 commemorative bricks and three planters. Inventory is at the city's Parks and Rec District. Anyway, I just think these are helpful to see, see what we have, see what we prioritize, see what's not listed there, things like that. And since I had cleaned them up because I was just curious, I thought I'd share them with you, so. Nothing of significance to report beyond that. And then I did meet with Jackie, we just chatted a lot about the different stuff and I told her to circle back with her. And then I talked to Carl too, and he recommended some city resources ultimately when we kind of get there that could be helpful in updating the website and things like that to get things a little more accessible for people, which is my goal. And that is all.
Thank you. Very inspirational. Thank you so much for all your hard work. The only thing I'd ask is if you could put in a footer, your, your name, a document name and a date, so we can keep track, especially if there are updates. Probably be better if I just threw out the old one, but that's not what I do.
Well, I'm like, yeah, I am.
That way I can track.
I missed that footer for .3 seconds. I just want to create a custom once I've seen it gone.
How's it different from what's on the website now?
It's not so much different as an Excel sheet, when you pull those ones off. They're PDFs on the website, so you can't really edit them. But they're also just not formatted to be like sorted and kind of be more dynamic. So I just cleaned that up a little bit. Like some of the Excel ones on here, like all the information was in like 10 different Excel cells. So I, mostly it was that. I didn't do anything on here of huge significance, except to, like I said, clean up some of the Excel. These ones had repeating menus throughout the Excel sheet, so I deleted that, froze the panes, like just basic stuff of making a little bit more sortable and dig-throughable so that ultimately, if anyone wants to dig through and look or sort or find, sort this by year, sort this by street number, sort it by this. I incorporated this one singular address rather than having the street number and the street name, I combined them in the beginning. So it was just little stuff that really will make it so that if and when we're ready to dig through, it's just a little bit more dynamic.
And staff has your electronic copy?
They do, yes.
Of this. I just had one thing I wanted to add, any other comments about Amy's work? Okay, again, thank you.
Madam Chair, excuse me. Could I make one comment on that?
Yeah.
Sorry. Amy, we are working on the, the historic districts and the addresses. We've got our GIS person working on that. I heard you comment on that. So I just wanted to know, that is in progress.
I really appreciate that because Kristen had mentioned that, and then I never really circled back on it in general. So I knew it was a potential and a possibility, so that's really great. I think that's going to be super helpful.
We're working on it, yeah.
Thanks, Cleve, I really appreciate it.
Great. I just had one thing to report. I attended, attended, watched a webinar, California Preservation Foundation. This is a very good organization to keep track of. They occasionally have webinars that are relevant to our research on historic districts, seeing what other communities are doing. This episode was maintaining and upgrading your historic home, and I just wanted to share some of the highlights with you. And Deanna, I will send you the link that I received so that if people wanted to actually sit through it themselves, they could. But a few things they talked about, they had two experts, one from Southern California, one who worked, talked about a lot about projects in Oakland. And they've worked with local historic agencies in their, in various jurisdictions. And so they're really on top of what's being allowed for historic buildings, even buildings on the historic register. One, there's another session that's coming up I plan to watch is about making your historic home wildfire safe. So that should be interesting. One thing they mentioned though in this webinar was that using tempered glass, both for some energy savings and to decrease impacts from fire, is being recognized both as for historic buildings and also from the insurance industry. And something I guess we need to be aware of is that the insurance industry is really driving the acceptance of new materials on historic buildings and, so that they don't lose that designation. Keeping the aesthetics of the original building is really what's critical. And if we want these, to save these buildings, we need to realize that there is flexibility, there always has been flexibility, and it's really being reflected now in the upgrades. So lots of historic homes are using newer materials, even after the fact, the new materials went in, including dual pane windows. One house was accepted into the National Historic Register after the fact. An interesting detail that one of the presenters talked about was decorative knee braces, these are under the roof and they're usually carved. So this one house had redwood that was totally degraded. It was just prohibitively expensive to replace. And so they were allowed in the city of Oakland to use a rigid foam that had been carved to look identical to the old and use that as replacements. And that was allowed in the city of Oakland and approved by their historic review community, community. Again, Class A underlayments and things to make buildings fire resistant insurers are really requiring that the old materials like wood shake not be used and wood siding, even if you have a fire resistant underlayment, they're just not going to insure the building. So again, allowances are being made. And they said that even though it makes it difficult for staff at the city level and building departments, the SOI standards have gray areas by design so that it makes them more useful and applicable across a broad of way, a broad array of jurisdictions. And that was something that they emphasized. So I think that, again, you know, we're moving this direction as we come up with our new guidelines. This is what's happening in other communities up and down California, and it's absolutely being accepted. So I've really looked forward to us coming up with some more specific guidelines in the near future, just so that we, again, are consistent when we evaluate requests for upgrading homes. And I think that that is pretty much it from that webinar that I was watching.
Is the webinar online?
It is, and so I will send the link to Deanna and so she can make that available to anybody who would want to watch it. And it's California Preservation Foundation, just look them up, they have, it's not often. And a lot of the things is just really beyond, you know, what we deal with on a regular basis. But once in a while they have something that really is more applicable to the kinds of things that we have to deal with on a regular basis.
Thank you, that was really interesting.
Anything else, any other comments, issues?
Not related to that. I don't know if this is appropriate, but I wanted to let you know that I will not be at any of, either one of the meetings in June.
Oh.
So I, I let Kristen know before.
That might be relevant because I can't make the first June meeting. Yeah, I don't have childcare, I could maybe work on it, but right now I don't. So just FYI.
Calendar, all right.
Come on, Ruth.
Probably be good to put that in an email to staff so they can keep track of it.
I sent an email to Kristen before she left, so I'm hoping that's recorded somewhere, but I can resend it.
Will you talk with any applicants? Do you have any schedule? Do you have any? Okay, you might be good. I don't think we made any promises, at least for the first.
Sorry, I was caught off guard in the beginning because I read all the materials for the files, but I didn't look at the agenda. So when I saw McDermott, I have to recuse because I appealed his original decision. So that's why. And in the past, when we've had renewal of, of those policies, it's always been itemized separately and not a considered item, so.
And just for procedural, I think it's best if we give those reasons at the time of. of recusal.
And I discussed it with staff, we debated about whether to do it. My view was yes to do it.
I think that that is, yeah, appropriate.
Sure.
You don't have to elaborate, just...
No, we discussed it before and the answer is you don't have to do it, and my preference was you do it, but it was listed as a consent item with the agenda.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Thank you all very much. It's 9:16, we stand adjourned until the, we don't know, until our next meeting.